Okay, I just got the signal that we're live. My name is Toby Barris. I am the chairperson for the Kaysville Planning Commission, and I'd like to welcome everyone here that's attending tonight, also those that might be attending online. Our first item of business tonight will be to approve the minutes for the January 12th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. So I'd just like to turn the time to the planning commissioners. Hopefully you've had a chance to review the minutes. And first of all, are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Or if not, I would entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes from January 12th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Sorry, I second that. Motion.
You have a question?
No, I second it.
Okay, second. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. Let's just do a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? So the voting is unanimous in favor of approving the minutes. Our next item of business is the election of a vice chair. With Commissioner Doxy, he finished his term at the end of last year. And so we have that vacancy now that we need to fill. And so if we have people that would like to put their hat in the ring here, there'd be time to nominate people for this vice chairmanship. Or the vice chair. Any takers?
Hey, Cody's not here, so.
Yeah, see, he would have been a good candidate. We could actually.
I think he'd be a great candidate.
No, don't nominate people who aren't here.
I was gonna nominate Krista. I would nominate Krista as vice chair.
I'd nominate Krista also.
I guess that teaches me not to comment.
Okay, any other buddy that wants to throw their hat in the ring? Are you willing to accept this nomination, Krista?
I am willing.
Okay. Well, despite the fact that we only have one candidate, is there even need to have a vote?
Just a voice.
A voice vote?
Voice vote.
Okay, so we'll just have a voice vote. All that can favor of appointing Commissioner Keach as the vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? So that is unanimous for in favor. Congratulations, Commissioner Keach. And we'll hand you the.
Mr. Chair.
Vice chair.
Before we move on, I'd like a point of order on the agenda for tonight. I'd like to make a motion to move item 13 up, to move it to below item four, and move that there.
Did you say below item four?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the item 13 is the public, or the public comment, right? Okay, so we know that there are several people here that might be interested in speaking. And so I would entertain that motion, so.
I would second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to move agenda item 13, the public comment, to right now.
Well, actually, we're gonna have to.
Actually, after the training.
We're gonna have to open a public meeting training first.
Oh.
And then we would do the public comment.
So after item four is the motion. So we'd have to.
Do the training with Nick.
Do the training first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, I understand now. So the motion is to place the public comment after the agenda item four, with our attorney, Nick Mills, giving that training.
And I'd like to make one motion that we limit the time to three minutes per person.
Two minutes?
Three.
Three minutes, okay.
Second.
Okay. So we have our motion, and we have a second. We'll start the voting with Will, or sorry, with Commissioner Lyon.
Aye.
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 All right, so that motion passes, and so we'll have public comment after agenda number four.
Members of the Planning Commission, it's good to be with you tonight. My name is Nick Mills. I'm the Kaysville City Attorney. I've been the city attorney for just over five years. And tonight, we're gonna talk about. Ms. Greenwood and I talked about two topics, and the last one kind of popped up after Ms. Edstrom had put out the agenda. So we're gonna talk a little bit about levels of discretion briefly, and we'll talk about Open and Public Meetings Act as well. Before we dive into the riveting material that we're gonna cover tonight, I just want to commend the staff that you have here. Ms. Greenwood is an excellent resource. Mr. Gibson, if you had the chance to work with him, he was phenomenal as well. But Melinda's really hit the ground running and brings a wealth of experience. I'm always amazed at all the things that she's handled at the county level and the local city level. We're really fortunate to have such a great resource here. So I just wanted to talk. I've noticed sometimes that commissioners, council members, the public are sometimes disappointed by the input they can give into some of these items. And I just wanted to briefly address the levels of discretion that you have. I'd encourage you strongly to, if you have a copy of this book, Ground Rules, to read it. It's, I'm a lawyer, so I guess I'm biased. But it's actually pretty good. It's written at, I think, a nice level. And it is, if you read the book, I think you'd be up to speed at 85% of what you're gonna cover and the issues that you're going to face. The author's an expert in land use, in land use law in Utah, and does a really good job of explaining some really complex topics in a down-to-earth way. On page 28, there is a, I'll show you this. 28, there's a figure that shows when you have discretion. And I noticed on your agenda tonight, items 11 and 12 are legislative items, and items four through 10, ours, five through 10, are all administrative items. So we'll talk kind of about the difference between those two. And I hope that this is informative for you, helpful for you as you make decisions going forward, and helpful to any public that wants to listen to this. So the Planning Commission has kind of two roles. They're an advisory board, and they listen to and make recommendations to the city council for the way that land use legislation should happen in the city. And when you're acting with that hat on as legislative, your legislative hat, you have broad discretion. In fact, if their standard is if the ordinance would promote the general welfare, or even arguably promote the general welfare, and it's not prohibited by the law, state or federal, then you can make that decision. Legislative decisions are where you should spend most of your time as a planning commissioner, and where you're most effective. This is often not how planning commissions work in practice, but a good planning commission would look 10 years down the road, spend a lot of time working through a general plan, deciding what the community should look like. And then, when the administrative decisions come forth, they're really easy because the amount of time and effort that you've spent thinking about legislative decisions have pretty much spelled out what you're gonna do. Administrative decisions, on the other hand, are highly regulated. And you're bound to approve them if they meet the ordinance. So conditional use permits that you have, you are presumptively bound to approve those. And the only thing that you can do is put conditions on those that are supported by the code. And preliminary plats are the same way. By the time the preliminary plat rolls through, the decision's largely been made, and those are decisions that should be approved as long as that plat meets the ordinance. That's really frustrating, candidly, for a lot of the public. There's a large crowd tonight. I'm sure it's gonna be frustrating for many of the public here. And that's unfortunate. And I hope that, I hope that this helps at least understand that at the time that you're approving a subdivision, that decision and those processes have been in place for a long time. A long time ago, a planning commission made a decision about a general plan. And a long time ago, that property was rezoned. And at this point, these conditional use permits and these preliminary plats are kind of at the end of the decision-making process. And you, as a planning commission, your hands are pretty much tied on what flexibility you have, unfortunately. I hope that's helpful. I'll now turn, oh, I wanted to talk about one last concept, and that's vested rights. Sometimes, sometimes people will think, well, maybe we could table this, and then we could start a legislative process where we change the code. And under the Utah State Code, once that person, once the applicant has applied, the code that's in place at the time is the code that dictates. And that's the concept of vested rights. Okay, could we, thank you. I'd like to talk for the remainder of my time about open and public meetings. And this is a very riveting topic to discuss. So I know you've been waiting and waiting to talk about this for months and months. So this is the required annual training. You can get this through League of Cities and Towns. You can get this at ULUI if they offer it, Land Use Institute. But Ms. Greenwood and I felt like this was appropriate to kind of put this on our agenda so that we knew that you had had it, and we could report this to, or keep a record of this. Could we go to the next slide? So one interesting thing about the Open and Public Meetings Act is that it starts with Declaration of Public Policy. This is very different than many other sections of the code. If you look up the retail theft section in the, or the theft section in the Utah State Code, it doesn't start with a public policy statement that says, we don't think people should steal stuff from other people. If you look up the speeding code, it doesn't say, we think you should follow the speed limit. But I think it's really appropriate here in the Open and Public Meetings Act because it's not necessarily the case that, I mean, it's pretty clear that you shouldn't take other people's stuff. But there are some real benefits, or could be potentially some real benefits if you didn't have to have an open public meeting for the government. There's some efficiencies that the government could potentially have. And I'm not here to say that that's what you should do, or that's what the state should do. I'm just saying that there's a clear policy decision that could have been made in the opposite direction. But the policy of the state is that you, as a public body, should have an open meeting. The public should be able to come and see the business that's taking place. It should be open, it should be public. And that doesn't mean that the public necessarily gets to participate at every stage of the meeting, but the meeting should take place openly. And you should deliberate openly. You should not hear the presentations and go back in the chamber, in the conference room, and make a decision and come back out. The public would, because you're servants of the public, you should conduct your deliberations openly, with a few exceptions. Can we go to the next slide? So in classic lawyer, a classic lawyer move is to name very obvious things and then give them definitions that are very specific. And this one matches up, but sometimes the definitions that lawyers come up with don't always match up. So a meeting is the convening of a public body. You're a public body with a corn present. And this includes workshops, executive sessions. If you were to go to look at a piece of property, and you're gonna do that as a group, and you're gonna discuss the property while you're on site, you'd do that. This means whether you're meeting here, or if during COVID, we met through electronic meetings, through Zoom or WebEx, and that was also a meeting. It's a meeting if you're going to discuss, receive comments, or act upon a matter that you have jurisdiction over. That means that when you go to league meetings, Ms. Edstrom is required to notice up these meetings and was required to meet certain requirements on what we publicize. But when you go to league meetings or other meetings, you're not there to discuss specific applications that are pending. So the city's not required to notice those up. Even though all of us would say, oh, I have meetings at the league, they're not meetings for the purpose of the Open and Public Meetings Act. Meeting also doesn't mean a chance gathering or social gathering. So if you all wound up at Bowman's to buy Texas doughnuts tomorrow morning after this meeting, you wouldn't have to, some of you wouldn't have to leave. It's just a chance gathering. If somebody got married, and somebody's child got married, and you're all invited, you wouldn't have to notice that up as well. Can we go to the next slide? We also sometimes have issues about what does it mean to convene? So the convening means the calling together of a public body by a person authorized to do so. That's Chairman Barris here, vice chairperson Keach now, who was happy to accept that nomination, I can tell. Somebody has authority to convene that. That's another reason why the league meetings, or if you come here to the city's Christmas party, why that's not a meeting. Because it hasn't been convened by somebody with the authority to do so. Several years ago, we had, we were sued for violation of this code. And one of our defenses was that the city manager had called some of these meetings. And there were other defenses. But the judge agreed with us that the city manager didn't have the authority to convene the meetings that they were complaining of. And that was one of our defenses. Ms. Greenwood, when you have a moment, could you go to the next slide? This is the law in a nutshell. And if you follow this law, if you follow this, this is the guts of the whole thing. So a meeting is open to the public unless closed. So unless you have a specific reason to close it, you should conduct it openly. You should deliberate openly. If you're ever on the fence and you think, oh, should I send this email? Should we discuss this? At this point, just remember this. We should have it in an open meeting. Next slide. I wanted to discuss one last topic because this comes up frequently. I'll have people ask this question. They will have questions, and they want to, perhaps they want to email Ms. Greenwood and ask these questions. But these might be questions that they think other planning commissioners might have. It is perfectly acceptable for you to send an email that includes all of you out. Now, let me give you a word of caution there. First, you should not do that during the open meeting. You shouldn't, Commissioner Lot should not be texting Commissioner Lyon and saying, I think this is a good project. We should approve this during the open meeting. The other thing is that that email should be, you should be very careful as you do that. It's A-OK to email Ms. Greenwood and say, hey, does this meet setbacks? Or some question like that. But the tendency then is for Ms. Greenwood to reply, and then that slowly devolves into a discussion amongst y'all about the merits of the project. And you should avoid that. But the legislature wanted to be clear that this doesn't prohibit you from including, ceasing all of y'all on an email with questions. So I think that's my last slide. Do you have any, can you verify that? Any questions? Okay, thank you. I'm a member of the South Ogden Planning Commission, and land use is a fascinating area of the law. You have an incredible impact on the community, how it develops, how it is going to look in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. And we as a city appreciate the work that you do. We know that you take it seriously, and thank you for that.
All right. Thank you, Nick Mills. We appreciate your training. That's very helpful. As we mentioned, we're gonna be having a public comment now. We'll open that up to the public. And just remember that Commissioner Lyon's part of this motion, we are gonna limit that to three minutes per person. And it is kind of going on from what the city lawyer had just mentioned to us. Items that are of administrative, which are five through 10, are things that we are not gonna be seeking public comment on. So if there's one of those that you really want to say something, right now would be the time to comment, okay? So items 11 and 12 are legislative actions. Those are the ones we can seek public comment on, those particular items. So we'll open the public comment now. And if anybody would like to come to the podium, just please state your name, and then you have three minutes.
My name is David Stone. I live on the other end of 200 North. I'm not sure which agenda item is come and go. That is what I'd like to address. Are we on target here? Do I do that?
Yes.
Come and go issue. You all live in beautiful neighborhoods, senior homes. You've done a great job landscaping and taking care of your neighborhood. The people, many of the people behind me have recently purchased homes, and I promise you their mortgages are higher than yours. And they have maybe less home than many of you have. But they want their homes to become what your neighborhoods are, what all of our neighborhoods are, is that the key word here on the screen is America's hometown. I think that's what Kaysville is. And I think you've all done a great job preserving that. The thing that concerns me here is this new parkway out here is becoming the western border of Kaysville. And the thing that we're going to put a convenience store with now more blowing drink cups and discarded Coke bottles and so forth, blowing in that little neighborhood, concerns me. There's going to be a larger amount of light, call that light pollution. None of you have that in your neighborhoods. You don't have that light pollution. If they were to knock that brown house down behind one of your homes, I think, and put a come and go or something there with lots of light, your backyard would be lit 24/7. That's what I can see happening, increased traffic right behind those brand-new homes. They're not gonna have the luxury of a nice, quiet backyard and soft lighting that they can just go out and sit in the backyard and visit together. They're gonna have a lot of heavy fluorescent light bleeding into their yards, and that's the number of neighborhoods, the number of homes. I think you folks have done a great job to help keep Kaysville a wonderful place to live. I'm concerned that if a come and go, any brand goes there, it's going to become a little bit like about 40th South and Bangor. You've got an interstate, you've got a busy road there. It's kind of dusty and noisy. And now you've got a business there right on the corner, and homes just a few doors down. I hope we don't become a Bangor Highway right there and have something like this. Even the name is, to me, is rather concerning. Some of the grandkids that have heard about it burst out laughing. And that's the name of the convenience store. Pretty derogatory, and a lot of minds. And that's now becoming proposed, that that's gonna be in our backyard is a big poster. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello. Do we need to state my name?
Yes, will you please state your name?
Melinda Mann. I would like the Planning Commission not to recommend a change to the sign requirements in Kaysville. This would be the highest sign within the city limits. It will cheapen the fill and the view in our neighborhood. The sign will direct light into our windows and negatively impact our families. The sign will increase traffic to our neighborhood. It will be one thing to have a gas station with an entrance of 200 North, but the gas station entrance is off of our residential street into our neighborhood, which will increase the safety concerns and traffic issues within our neighborhood and for our children.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Eric Strong. And I want to talk for a second about the sign too because I know that's one of the things that you're voting on.
Toby, we are gonna have a public hearing, I think.
Yeah, there will be a public hearing for the sign ordinance. So if you would like to talk to that, you could, and not that particular item. It's just item 10, I think, might be the one that people might want to talk about. And that one, we are not seeking public comment on that one, so.
Okay, so when is the?
That would be item, I mean, you're certainly welcome to make the comment now. It's just that if you wanted to specifically speak on that item, that one is on item 11.
Okay, and we're gonna get to that eventually, then? Is that what you're saying? Okay.
Yep.
Oh, wait.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment? It's not totally clear to me. Maybe I'll just try to restate what I understand, what we're doing here. The last two items on the agenda have public hearings, which means at the moment of those items, we open the floor to the public, and you can come in and comment on the last two items on the agenda. This call to the public is an open forum for anyone who wants to come and say what you want on any agenda item, or anything else if you feel so inclined. That's what this, that's what we move to the front of the meeting that is usually at the back of the meeting.
And if I can maybe add to that?
Go ahead.
We know that there were a lot of people that were concerned about the gas station, the convenience store that was proposed down 200 North. The only thing that we're considering tonight is the preliminary plat for a subdivision, which is splitting of the lots. We're not talking about the convenience store at all. But we figured that there probably would be people that were gonna be coming. We got comments saying, we're gonna come to the meeting. And we thought, well, since we're not doing public comment for that item, if people want to speak, they'll do it during this open-mic time that we've got call to the public. So if you're here for that, now's the time to come and talk about it because we won't be talking, we won't be opening it up to the public when we talk about the specific subdivision lot split.
I guess I'm getting old. I'm a little still confused. My name is Brent Merrill. We live out at the end of Second North on West End.
Can I have you speak more into the microphone? So we have people that are also attending electronically, and they're having a hard time hearing.
Does this help a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, just right into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. My home currently is worth approximately $500,000, half million dollars. The homes that are in the Perry subdivision, I think they cover West Gate if I'm not mistaken, vary from, well, $500,000 up to 3/4 of a million dollars. If this gas station goes in facing all of these beautiful homes in this very quiet area, the value of those homes is gonna drop dramatically and overnight. This is not something that should be taken lightly. Not to mention the fact that the traffic pattern for the kids going across the street from the Perry home subdivision going south across the street to the elementary school is a nightmare right now. There is a long line today, as an example. There were mothers lined up all the way around from Second North through, going south through the subdivision, to park in front of the elementary school waiting for their kids to get out. There were 20 cars lined up on Second North waiting for that next car to move forward so that the next one could get in. That's just gonna get worse when the other 75 homes or 100 homes are finished with, on the Perry subdivision. Please be very, very aware of the challenges we have, both financial and. Please be very, very aware of the challenges we have, both financial and safety, when it comes to this gas station to consider.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jake Taylor. I have more of a clarifying question, if I can. You mentioned that tonight you're discussing the administrative item of the plat subdivision, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Is now an opportunity to present or suggest certain conditions for that eventual development, or would that come at a later time? You, I just know you mentioned that you weren't discussing the gas station tonight.
Right. Yeah. Should I, can I, should I explain?
I think that's okay.
The property, this particular property where the come and go is apparently proposed or may be going, has been zoned commercial for a lot of years. In the commercial zone in Kaysville, a convenience store and a gas station like that is what's called a permitted use. That means it's allowed.
Sure.
And we have no review. We don't do any review of that whatsoever here as a planning commission. When someone wants to come and build that or other permitted commercial uses, they just file a building permit application here at the city front desk, and then the staff reviews it to make sure that they check all the boxes of the requirements that are in the city code. And if they meet all of the requirements, they're approved. There isn't any, there isn't any further review that takes place on that. So the only thing that we're reviewing is the splitting of the lot, and we're just checking to make sure that they meet all of the requirements there. But we're not, that, those lots could contain anything that's permitted in the commercial zone. We have no application before us, and it wouldn't even come to us. It would just come to the city staff for a convenience store, for anything else, for that matter at this point.
Yeah, thank you, and I think we understand that. I thought what I heard from the attorney was that on, on the permitted commercial land, that the commission can put certain contingencies or constraints on that.
If it's a conditional use.
Okay.
If it's listed as a conditional use, and this is not.
Okay.
This is, this is a permitted use. So there are a number of standards that are in the city ordinance, like number of parking spaces and.
Sure.
And access and building height and so on. Those things are all in the code and the ordinance. The city staff will just review it. If they meet all of those, they get their building permit and they'll build.
Yeah. And can, can changes be requested to those, to that code?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
In this sort of setting, or would that take place through another avenue?
No, well, sure, anyone can request a change to the city's code, and then that would be considered here, like we're going to consider the sign.
Sure.
Ordinance change tonight. And it would go through the process, and then we would make a recommendation, and then it goes to the council. But as far as affecting a application.
Right.
If, if a property owner or an applicant has made an application prior to a change in the code being initiated, even if the city changes the code, they still get to proceed under the old code.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Streeter, and I have a question regarding the access that we've been talking about for that subdivision. If I'm understanding it correctly, it's to take that plot and subdivide it into two, but one of the plots will not have direct access. Is that still allowed for a subdivision to not have direct access?
Yeah. I'm not sure. I mean, that will be covered during that item, and so I don't know. I mean, we, we'll cover that on item 10. I'm not sure, can we talk about that now, Melinda? I don't know.
It's up to you.
I mean, I think that's okay. I would allow the question, just so that if that alleviates some concerns, we could allow the question, so.
I can answer that real quick while we.
Okay, yes, Dan, please.
As far as the subdivision split, as long as they have frontage, that's the only thing required by the ordinance. How they get to it, they can park their bike and walk across the sidewalk and get on it. That's off of the main drag. That's, as long as they got frontage, that's how they're required to have. What I anticipate will happen is they'll work out some kind of agreement or something to come through, an access agreement later on with the two lots. They're going to be probably owned by some same company, so they won't, it's not going to matter. But all they're required to do to have the legal lots is the one approach, and as long as they have frontage, which they do on Second North, that's all they're required to have.
And frontage, you just mean, can you clarify what frontage means?
Yeah, frontage is linear feet along a public way. So, so say like in front of your front yard, you have 90 feet from your fence to your fence, and it's against the sidewalk, which is out to the public way street. That's your frontage, the 90 feet.
Okay, so even though it's a right-hand turn lane only right there, that's still allowed for frontage road?
Right. They have street frontage. Whether they can get a car there or not, that's, that's, that's going to be up to civil, and they're going to work that out amongst themselves. As far as the city's concerned, they have frontage. Everybody just might walk to a phone booth there. It's, it's all we require.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else would like to, to comment during the call to the public? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public, and we'll go on to agenda number item five, conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Badger Built Company, a custom woodworker located at 482 Joshua Drive. We'll turn the time over to the staff to give their report on this item.
All right. I don't think I've had as many conditional use permits at one time. We'll get through them. Let's go back to the slide, I have a second. This first business is for Dylan Badger, who is here at the meeting tonight. He is, he applied for business license, and he is here for a conditional use permit for his major B home occupation. He will be doing custom woodwork from his home. And most of his work will be done over email, and occasionally he'll go to a customer's home to work with them and do some custom things for them. He's zoned in an R-120 and does not plan on having any employees there or customers really living in the home. And staff is recommending approval for this conditional use permit. Oh, and we've got a slide right here, it is his home, as you can see. Yeah, there you go. So staff is recommending approval for Badger Built Company located at 482 Joshua Drive. If you have any questions.
Yeah, does the commission have any commission, or any questions for Mr. Badger?
I do have one.
Can you come up to the podium, Mr. Badger? Can you state your name, please?
I am Dylan Badger.
Mr. Badger, the staff report says that you're, do you work over email or the phone? And I'm thinking, how do you do woodwork over email or over the phone?
Well.
But I'm, and I'm being facetious, but I'm just curious, are you doing it in the garage or is there someplace else in your?
Yeah, yes, yeah, in the garage.
Okay. You're not, you don't, you don't have like a separate.
No, no.
Workshop or something?
Yeah, the idea to that was that there's not customers coming.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Follow-up question to that. What about storage and delivery of materials?
Really nothing excessive, what is, you know, I'm, I'm not going to have a vast storage of stuff, so there's not going to be anything, you know, really on the side of the house, or, you know, overflowing into the backyard or to become an ice water. Yeah.
So is it going to be a situation where you're, whatever project you're doing, you'll have the wood materials delivered, or you'll go get them yourself, bring it back? They'll basically be in, within, contained within the garage, not stored anywhere else on the property?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, you're free to sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further discussion or not? I would entertain a motion.
I'd move, make a motion to approve conditional use permit for major home, major B home occupation for Badger Built Company located at 482 Joshua Drive.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. We will start the voting with Commissioner Keach.
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All right, so the voting is unanimous, so that motion passes. So congratulations, you have your conditional use permit. We'll go on to item six, a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Forsetti LLC, a home-based firearms and sporting accessory retailer located at 71 North Gray Fox Circle. So we'll turn over the time to the staff.
This is Jennifer, I'm here. All right, so this is an application for Forsetti Homes. It's a home-based firearms and sporting accessory retailer. And so what he'll be doing in his home, as you can see his home, he will have customers come to his home, and they will do special order to pick accessories for guns. He is also, and then they'll special order them, and then have them scheduled to come and pick them up once the, once firearm has arrived. So he doesn't store or keep those on hand until, well, for a minute until the customer picks them up. He's also a certified concealed firearms instructor, and so he will be doing instruction from his home from time to time. You do, let's see. You do have, he will be the instructor, but he is not, so he'll be doing those in his home sporadically. He's not certified as a gunsmith, so no smithing is done on the firearms at the home. And so it is not needed to have an FFL license to, to do what he is doing in his home. We have not received any calls or any emails or any questions in regards to this business, and staff is recommending approval of this application for Forsetti Company at 71 North Gray Fox Circle.
Okay. Are there, was there any recommendation from the staff on like the class size, you know, like when they are conducting these classes?
So we actually discussed that in our Kaysville City Code 1726-4. You can see right on.
Organized classes.
So under major home occupations, it, this obviously has gun repair there, it doesn't specifically not say anything, but these organized classes, it limits shall be placed on the number of students and/or the number of vehicles transporting students to prevent congestion. As you can see, like on H preschools with no more than 12 students, that's clearly a number that's been assigned, you know, in our ordinance. But as it is right now, these organized classes, which is what this would fall under, there's not a number of students that we've set unless.
So I would just ask Mr. Bolton, how many students do you anticipate at a time for the instruction?
I thought he was going to be here.
Oh, he's not here?
No.
I can give you a little past history, what we've done in the past is, we went with the 12 for preschools and stuff, because usually they'll stagger between times they drop off or whatever. So usually it works out. That's entirely up to what you guys decide, but the number we've always found that does work in neighborhoods is 12. I'm not saying that he'll have more or less than that, but that's usually a good solid number that we, we've used on a lot of other times in past history.
Can I ask a question, though? With preschool, isn't that more drop-off pickup, not stay for a class?
Yes, that is, for sure. But there would probably be adequate, I don't know if the court is, but if they've got a cul-de-sac or a public street, we do allow public parking on, on the street, and it'd be no different than you having a party at your house for another reason.
As you can see, on number nine, parties for the purpose of selling merchandise or taking orders shall not be held more often than four times each month. So even allowing the parties to be there, it wouldn't be any different than having an instructional class going on.
I'd recommend that having the applicant here to ask questions, if you just move this item to an agenda or a meeting where he can be present. I mean, obviously that's the planning commission's discretion, but clearly we have questions that we can't be answered because the applicant is not here.
I'd make a motion that we table this item until, to a future agenda, future meeting when the applicant can be here.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table the item and a second. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Sondloff.
Aye.
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 Okay, this item is unanimously tabled, so we'll go on to the next item, item number six, or, excuse me, item number seven, conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Michelle Deppi, sorry if I spelled your name incorrectly, Photography, a photo studio located at 421 South, 800 East. Turn the time over to the staff with their report.
Great, so it's me again. Michelle, I believe is not going to be here tonight. She had a family situation in which she couldn't come, but I believe that with the background of this applicant, it should be fairly easy. She's a photographer, and she will be doing photography out of, mostly outside in portraits around town. However, there will be an occasional opportunity where she can do that in her home, and she knows that it would be by appointment only, and that they have room for parking in front of her home. As you can see, she's got a three-car garage, or home, and so there's plenty of parking there in front of her home for the customers to park, and they would just come, obviously with an appointment. Staff is recommending approval on this for a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Michelle Deppi Photography located at 421 South, 800 East.
Any questions on this item, commissioners?
So there's not going to be any classes, there's not going to be deliveries of?
Using the studio in the home will be actually the exception. It's just, it's available if needed, but it's not the major part of.
So it, it sounds like primarily she's almost just checking the box to say she's got a home business so she can have her office there or whatever, but the vast majority of the time.
She's not there.
It's, there's going to be no different impact to the neighborhood because she's going to be going somewhere else. The one-off would be people will come to her, and it'll look like.
I'll say.
It'll look like a visitor, like any other home.
Yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to be clear, because someone observing this might say, "Wait a minute, the last guy wasn't here, and you tabled it. This applicant isn't here, but you're going to approve it? That doesn't make sense." I'm trying to say, "This one's different."
Yeah, it is. I agree with that.
I agree with Josh, and therefore I would make a motion that we approve the major B home occupation for Michelle Deppi Photography at 421 South, 800 East.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. We'll start the voting with myself. Aye.
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 Okay, so item seven passes unanimously. We'll go on to item eight, a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Operation Armed Citizen LLC, home-based firearms, gunsmithing, manufacturing located at 184 South, 400 West. Turn over the time to the staff.
All right, one more left to go. The applicant I believe is here, is Derek? Okay, oh yes, he's sitting in the back burner. We've talked on the phone several times, so there's been a couple of questions and indifference from the first application versus this application. Derek is the owner of Operation Armed Citizen. He will mostly be doing engraving and repairing customers' guns in his home. From time to time, he will be making his own, like making videos of them and then selling them online at the Utah Gun Exchange. Customers will come to the home by appointment only and he does have a current FFL license. I passed that on to the Kaysville City Police Department. They have reviewed it and approved his application as well as him being able to receive the application through the FFL. He is Zoned Armani, so it's a major home occupation and staff is recommending approval for a major B home occupation for Operation Armed Citizen located at 184 South 400 West. An applicant is here.
Any questions for the applicant?
I have some questions.
Okay, yeah, could the applicant please come up? And just a reminder, please state your name when you come to the podium.
So, a couple of questions. One, just for maybe just my information and kind of for the record, if you could explain to us what, what the federal firearms license kind of is and what, what you will be doing under, under that license? And then, I think this has already kind of been answered, but you're not planning, correct me if I'm wrong, to have regular retail sales in and out? It's going to be kind of one-off sort of order basis or they're going to be giving you a firearm to repair or work on, is that right?
Great, so I have a FFL 107, but mainly the 7 allows for the manufacturing and gunsmithing and modifications to firearms. And so most of the firearms that will be taken care of will be brought in by customers or like cosmetic jobs done on them, like laser engraving or welding and things like that. And then we'll also have like a five-month project where we make one of our own because the manufacturing license allows us to produce our own and sell them on various like programs. Mainly planning to do it through online gun robbery, Utah Gun Exchange, but use it also for advertisement. We don't plan on having like a large inventory of, you know, like a normal gun store where people come through and see what we have and pick up what they want. Everything will be by appointment and.
So you'll be having deliveries for some components that you are going to be assembling, but, but that's kind of as a rarity in the sense that maybe once a month you'll be doing that. So there, it's not like there's going to be an increase of deliveries that the neighborhood's going to say, what's going on over there kind of thing, is that right?
Correct, and in fact, a lot of the components that will be delivered, because they are signature mark and it doesn't always mind of my day job, I'd actually be picking most of them up from the carriers themselves. If that makes any difference.
Yeah.
If it is, then it's just for the house, because it'll be done throughout the day.
Yeah. That's helpful, yeah, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, you're free to go sit down, thanks.
I'd, I'd recommend approval for conditional use permit for major B home occupation Operation Armed Citizen LLC for Derek Leoto located at 184 South 400 West.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval and a second. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Summerquorn.
Aye.
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 Aye. That item passes unanimously, so you have your conditional use permit, so congratulations on that. We'll now go on to a preliminary plat subdivision for the MCW Kaysville subdivision located approximately 150 West 200 North. And we'll turn the time over to the staff on their report on this item.
Right, that's me. This is out there on Main Street, or Second North. There's a map right there. Just west of the Golden West, I believe Credit Union on the corner there, 100 West. They are gonna, they used to be the Bob's Place Flower Guy. And so there's the Credit Union there, it's three point, three point, almost one acres. And so you've got the Credit Union there, you've got a couple little houses that were businesses over the years, the one on the corner, the Photo Fly and then Bob's Flower Shop, so that square area there. What they've done is going to do a subdivision that consolidates some of the lots and just creates four instead of, and there's like six lots there now. So they're going to take the Credit Union, that's going to be Lot 1, then they're going to have another lot, 2, that's going to contain, I can't remember how many square feet, and then they're going to have two smaller ones. So basically what you've got is four lots, the smallest one's going to be 15,400 square feet, the largest one, which is Lot 1 with the bank already on it, is 56,000 square feet. And that's how she's going to break down right there in that picture. And basically, it's a commercial zone, so there's really no frontage requirements, no, I mean, specific footage. And so as long as they all have frontage, they all meet what they need to do, I guess, to make it work for them. That's what they chose to do and that's what they're applying for a preliminary plat for. I do know that they may be coming in for rezone for part a little bit, but that's at another date, so for mixed use or something, for the smaller lots on the west side. And that's about that in a nutshell.
Dan, this has all been reviewed by the city staff?
Yes, we've had our development meetings with it, we've had Dexter go through it, we've had the sewer district, we've had all our utilities, Brian Johnson with Powers worked out how power's going to get to everybody. It's been thoroughly gone through for several months.
Is the applicant here tonight? I mean, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Looks like he's waiting in his head back there.
Joe, Joe was here this evening. We also, because 200 West, or sorry, 200 North through this area is a UDOT facility, we required that they work with UDOT to figure out the access. So part of the reason why the Golden West Credit Union is included in the subdivision is because they are, Lot 2 will be acquired as a property from Lot 1 and they incorporated a shared access that would go for the Credit Union that exists now and then as now they would like to put in a car wash for Lot 2. But yeah, Joe is here this evening, we have questions for him.
Any questions for the applicant? Any discussion amongst the commission? No, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval for preliminary plat subdivision for the MCW Kaysville subdivision at 175 West 200 North on the basis of the staff report, which I understand to mean that the subdivision as proposed meets all the requirements in city code.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and a second. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
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 All right, so this motion passes. So congratulations, you have your preliminary plat approved. Item 10 is the preliminary plat subdivision for the Westgate Estates Commercial Subdivision located at approximately 234-Five West 200 North. And we'll turn the time over to staff to present this item.
Did you want me to do this one?
What, something?
I'll just go ahead, I have a conversation with the applicant, which the applicant is attending via our go-to meeting, so I think they, they've had a hard time hearing, I think maybe some microphones might work better than the others, but when time comes, I have questions for them. They are present remotely. So as, as is listed on the agenda, the property is out at approximately 2368 West 200 North. The property is owned by Perry Land Investments, but the Come and Go Viewing and Convenience Stores is under contract to purchase that property from Perry Land Investments. So they are the applicant for this subdivision. It's a general commercial and it is three acres, so that's just over 30,000 square feet. Right now, the property is vacant and undeveloped. This is an aerial view of the property. This, I'll just point this out, this is a weird little shaped parcel, not sure why that's there, but it was confusing to us as staff as we were looking that over. It looks like it would be showing ingress egress into the property, but it's just the shape of the property. So this is the proposed subdivision. Essentially, they would split the lot into two, Lot 1 would be one acre and then Lot 2 would be two acre, or the remainder of the two acres. So we have reviewed this item for compliance to all of the subdivision codes that we have and it does meet those requirements. One item that we have discussed internally as staff and was mentioned earlier in the call to the public, but they will have to provide access to Lot 1. And I mean, this is, this whole, I guess subdivision property, whatever, has had a lot of oddities to it because of the ongoing negotiations between UDOT and the current property owner Perry Holmes to acquire property needed for the on-ramp onto the West Davis Corridor. So 200 North is a city-owned road in this location and in theory, that means that we would be able to grant access. However, one of the things that UDOT intends to do, like it's, it's not reported yet, but essentially they're going to acquire a strip of this property out here and then they would not allow any access off of the 200 North frontage to the property. So because of that, the access to the lots will have to come off of Westgate Lane, which is a public road. And we would require, in order to get access to Lot 1, that they provide some sort of an easement access agreement. City prefers to see that on a plat dedicated as the easement. In this case, we have a note on the plat that says that the access easement would be recorded with a separate document, which is another way of accomplishing that task, but that's what the applicant has requested to ensure that access to Lot 1 is there. And so it was mentioned earlier, I don't know what the intent would be for the property to be owned by the same or different company, but the subdivision would essentially create a second lot and as we've reviewed this with staff, our pump works, city engineer, we're recommending approval of the subdivision.
So you're saying that it meets all of the requirements?
Yeah. Yep, we've reviewed, it meets all of the, I mean, we don't have minimum lot sizes in the general commercial zone, so we don't have any minimum frontage requirements, but we do have to make sure that lots have access to them. And so the review, as we've gone through our compliance checks, just said that it's in compliance and we're recommending approval of the subdivision.
So as far as access goes, normally with that being a city street, when development were to occur on both lots 1 and 2, the city would likely normally grant access to 200 North?
Yeah, and we, we actually, I mean, a little bit more background on the property, but we, we as a city looked at this property to put a fire station. The, we attempted negotiations with UDOT to have access come from 200 North and simply they're just not interested in that. The applicant attempted to give, you know, to give UDOT adequate information for them to make a decision to grant even a write-in, write-out access off of 200 North and UDOT would not allow that. And the only way they can prevent that, because we own the road right, is to essentially keep a strip of property that they own and control and then we can't, you know, we can't provide access through somebody else's property if they're not going to allow it.
At this point, UDOT doesn't control that?
Not at this point. Perry, Perry Holmes still owns the property. The negotiations for that have been between Perry Holmes and UDOT. And above what I just told you, I'm not aware of where they're at with their negotiations, we're not privy to that information.
That, you know, that all being the case, I would say that since it's one owner, the one owner now is proposing to split the lots, that they definitely provide for cross-access agreements between the two lots in case there is, the access is cut off on 200 North. But from what you're saying, it sounds like that's what they're intending to do. So that would, I guess that would address the access issue.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
Suppose now's a good time. Has any, before a motion's made, I just want to add my understanding of some background to this property that I think might answer some confused looks that I see or have seen tonight out there. So I'll go way back actually, well, way back is a relative term. Let's say 30 years ago, this was at the end of Schick Lane, right? It was a farmer's field. Some of you may have farmed it or hunted pheasants in it. It was way out west. And over time, obviously, maybe multiple times, ownership of this land has changed hands. Finally got to the point, actually, before I get to this point, along that path, the West Davis Corridor was planned to come through. That has been known for at least a decade, I think, or longer, in terms of the right-of-way and the general location of where the West Davis Corridor was going to come in. I am relatively certain, I started on the planning commission in just before 2010, I was gone for a few years and I've been back for, I think, seven or eight years. So I think predating that time or maybe late 2000s, before 2010, even before Perry got this subdivision as it currently stands, the city council decided to rezone this area, this little rectangle, if you will, as commercial. Because what they said, and this is my interpretation of it, you can go back and read the records, they, they said, look, if the West Davis Corridor is going to come in here, it makes sense to maybe put a little blip of commercial in this little spot. And even then, it was still Schick Lane and still probably pheasant hunt worthy. Slowly, things changed, but it was still rezoned commercial and even probably surrounded by agriculture still, but they said, it makes sense from a planning perspective to put this commercial here. Then I think fast forward, Perry Holmes buys it, Perry comes in and says, let's subdivide this, let's plan out where our subdivision is going to go. Many of you might already live there now. Many of you might already live there now. At the time that subdivision happened, that was less than 10 years ago, probably, I think, less than five years ago, maybe three-ish years ago. So, some of us, I know I was here, some of us might have been on the planning commission. At that time, when this lot, as one lot, was planned out, it was firmly commercial. Before any shovel was put in the ground for Perry Holmes, it was commercial, and I think the school was already there when it was decided to be commercial. And I kind of give that background because we received many comments before this meeting, and they were all valid comments, and I think comments that we probably all share the same concerns in terms of traffic, in terms of safety with the school, all of those things. There are things that can be done to address those, but the one thing that cannot be done that the ship has sailed on, as has been said in other ways to tonight, is what can go within that little blob, blip of commercial zoning. The legislative decision, where there is all sorts of discretion to consider traffic, to consider safety, to consider, as Nick said, what's going to promote the general welfare, that question and those policy considerations was answered at least three or so years ago, maybe, probably more than that, longer than that, when the council originally zoned this commercial. So, that's why our hands are tied, and that's why we're only looking at saying, "Does it meet what the code requires? The staff, head of the staff report says yes." Even if we wanted to change and not allow it, we would be, we literally would be violating state law if we did that. And if we all go back to civics class, it is an American ideal that we live under the rule of law, not the rule of what we think as humans should be done. We look at what the law says, we have to follow it. Unfortunately, that's where we're at in this context. Three or 10 years ago, it was a totally different conversation. So, I guess I say that all because I see where this is probably going to go, and I think that's some of the background that my, is my understanding of this. My footnote then to this, my conclusion, I guess, would be, the concerns you have, I think there are ways to address them. Crosswalks, lighted crosswalks, work with the, work with the school district more than probably you all have done, trying to find a different route, you know, direct people to come in from another, one of the other streets into the, into the school. It's not going to eliminate the problems, it's only going to help, it's only going to sort of reduce the risks and the concerns, but unfortunately, we can't change what's already been done, so I'm just echoing what's been said before, and trying to give that background for where I think this is probably going to go in terms of a decision here in a moment. So, that's all I have.
Any other discussion from the commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, Melinda, I have a question.
Okay.
Melinda, can you speak to, so, it seemed pretty firm, and the UDOT part is the part that still, I just need to get a little bit more clarity around. So, right now, you're saying there will be zero, in time, there'll be zero entrance from 200 north, they'd have to go along the side, the Westgate Lane? Is that what you were?
Yes, our understanding is that essentially, UDOT's going to hold access off of 200 north hostage, because they're going to buy property, and by, by property, I mean, no one has a choice up against UDOT, right? They can do eminent domain and condemnation, even if they don't want to sell the property. So, they will purchase a strip of land that will be in between the city's right-of-way and the privately-owned property, and then they will not grant access over the property that they own. So, as it stands right now, we could allow access only from Westgate. I mean, we could require access off of 200 north, but like I said, I mean, there was months of back and forth between the applicant and UDOT, the city and UDOT, trying to convince them to grant access off of 200 north, even a right-in, right-out, and UDOT would not allow that. So, I mentioned there's a lot of oddities with this. Part of the oddity that we're talking about is because it's owned by Perry and Commercial, it's under contract with another entity to sell, and then also, UDOT, in the middle of all this, is entangling the property to acquire the right-of-way that they need for the on-ramp, but according to the UDOT regulations and what their, I guess, administrative rules are for traffic, they will not allow access, and so, they're kind of putting the nail in the coffin by going and ensuring they get that property to prevent that. I hope that explains in more detail.
Yeah, thank you.
So, my guess is, maybe you know for sure, they're, let's see if this works, they're saying that, it doesn't work, they're saying that there's going to probably be an on-ramp relatively close to this west property line, if not right there, maybe frontage road, on-ramp or something. And so, if there were an entrance off of 200 north into one or both of these lots, that's too close to the on-ramp. And so, they have rules that say, if there's an on-ramp, you have to have X number of feet away from an on-ramp before there's any sort of a driveway or road, and so, this violates that, and you have to come off Westgate.
Yeah, and let me just, we have, it's a super busy area, but let me just show you where we can see the corridor is kind of roughed in, so it'll just give you a better, a better view of what's going on over there. Okay, now where am I?
Down.
There you go.
There we go. So, this is the property that we're talking about right here, and you can see this is kind of where that on-ramp is already starting, starting to kind of form. And so, yes, UDOT has regulations that, yeah, for their safety considerations or whatever, that they don't want to see any points of egress or ingress within a certain distance of on-ramp for any facility that they operate, and so, that's, that's where they're essentially, you know, where they're, I guess, getting the justification for doing that. I'd imagine that there was quite a bit of back and forth between the property owner and UDOT about this, the applicant and UDOT. I mean, if you're wanting to ask the applicant more questions about that, it wasn't really, we asked UDOT about it because our preference would be to have access coming off of 200 north. The applicant did conduct a traffic study and submitted that to UDOT that showed full movement access would be okay, but that still is against their regulations and rules, and so, regardless of what that traffic study has said, they, as I said, I mean, they're, they're going to just go obtain the property that they need in whatever manner they do that and prevent the access off of 200 north.
Can you keep that up for a second?
Yeah.
I'll be very quick.
Can you zoom in at all?
No, no, this is good. This is just, maybe a bad metaphor, throw another log on the, the fire of what you can do with your concerns as citizens. I'm not committing anything to this, and I have no data to support this one way or the other, but as an idea, may, and it might not be for several years, could be less, I have no idea. I'm just saying, as an idea, one possible solution, if you want to direct your energy and concern, is, you know, when there's a gas station on this corner here, if the, there's very specific criteria that the city requires, so it may not ever rise to this level, but if it does, you could have a light here. Now, that's not going to eliminate the concerns, maybe it makes worse concerns, I don't know, but my suggestion is, you're hearing that we're saying, you know, we can't do anything about it, but that doesn't mean there's nothing you can do. There's just other avenues you should be pursuing to try to address the concerns that you have. So, so, yeah, like I said, maybe that doesn't work in city's opinion, I haven't talked to city staff at all, I don't know, but that's a possibility, you know, there's the, there's the rail trail crossing lights, if there's concerns of children crossing 200 north to get to school, which undoubtedly, I'm sure there is and will be as Perry Holmes gets built out, there's going to have to be something that is done there, and the ship has sailed on some things, but you are at the ground floor, so to speak, on being able to drive good decisions from here on, it's just this one in our moment isn't one of them. So, that's just additional thoughts.
So, just, I mean, essentially, irrelevant to the subdivision, but just, the police department is going to move the school crossing that is down here over to here to accommodate the homes that live over here, so that crosswalk will be
Up there.
Here, instead of over here. So, I mean, irrelevant to the subdivision, but just to know that that's part of the plan for, I don't know when they're going to implement that, but it's been confirmed that that's what they're going to do. They just would have to then be able to hire the crossing guard to staff it, because we're five or six crossing guards short.
Yeah, so I'm looking at a map, I don't know who this came from, or it just got passed out to us. My guess is, let me retract, not retract, just revise, I don't know that, the way that the lot, the way that it's designed, West Davis corridor, frontage road, and on-ramp and whatnot, I don't know that there will ever be a light there, it's probably too close. Nevertheless, it's still possible to address the concerns in some other way of safety. It's never going to be perfect, but
Yeah, you don't allow a traffic signal that close to the on-ramp.
Okay, yeah, so, so, strike my suggestion there, but go back to my broader one, which is, try to find other ways. Nobody wants kids to be unsafe, so I think the city would share that concern, certainly all of us up here would be, share that concern, let's try to find ways, short of changing what's already been done that we can't do anymore, try to find ways to address those, and again, I agree with Melinda, this is not germane to the subdivision concern or agenda item, but I know that's why you're all here, at least I suspect that, so I'm trying to throw out some brainstorms here.
Okay, so do we have any other discussion that's like, related to the subdivision question? I mean, I think that some of these items we're talking about right now are definitely legitimate, and we can understand the concerns of the public, but we could address these items outside of the meeting too, since they're not necessarily directly related to this item.
Toby, there's a gentleman out there that has a question, I don't know if you want to allow it.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't want to get thrown out. I just want to have a question.
I mean, we've allowed
I'm ordering, I apologize.
I mean, I, as a, we can do this one question, if, you know, we could allow it, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a traffic clo, excuse me, a traffic flow question. Essentially, that, you know, people weren't able to turn out of here, that they may end up heading back through the subdivisions, and that's definitely a possibility.
Yeah, you know, to, to traffic flow, I'm wondering, I mean
So, he was, he was saying, you know, without a traffic signal here, that people will result to, right, I mean, it's kind of like, you want to go the safest way, and I waited, I don't know, two and a half minutes out here the other day to turn left, and I was like, "Why am I just not turning right?" So, I think that's really kind of the concern that the gentleman's expressing. That very well could happen, but at this point, you know, we're considering the subdivision of the property and traffic patterns
Would be for the application.
But I can tell you that the city has had discussions regarding this property, as well as another property over here, to put a fire station on, and through those discussions, I understand that if there is a traffic signal in the future, it won't be at Westgate and Island Lane, it would be probably not even here, but likely to be further away from the, the on-ramp.
Yeah, with UDOT, you have to have a certain distance, they don't do it without, it's a quarter mile typically.
Yeah, so
Because you're slowing.
The, I mean, the, I think what has complicated this, right, is, is the UDOT and their requirements, and it would be a lot, the property as a commercial zone would be a lot more attractive if there was multiple access points to the property from Westgate as well as 200, but, you know, it's, like I said, it's just not possible. So, based, that is, based on that feedback, that is why the applicant then has come back to us with the subdivision, and then the requirements of having the access agreement to access such a parcel.
So, when you, when you do the subdivision plat approval, the preliminary, is access one of the requirements that you look at?
I think that is one of the listed requirements in the subdivision, right, Dan?
Yeah, there's, there is this, there is access.
You have to have access.
Right, but it doesn't really say how it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just requires that you have access to a public street in some way, probably.
And then you gotta maintain the frontage.
Yeah, of course. I mean, you know, that, I guess, this isn't really, that's, I'm asking the question because I'm thinking about the access in the future when, when applications are made for the uses on these lots. And, and I think from the city standpoint, we would prefer the access on 200 north, because if it's on Westgate, I mean, you're, you're in a residential subdivision, in a residential area. But if UDOT's not going to allow access on 200 north, that's the only access then that's left, is on Westgate. And Melinda's been saying that UDOT continues to say, "Well, we won't allow access," but UDOT doesn't own the access right now.
They don't.
And they may not.
So, if we, if we do approve a contingent on access being on 200, I think what you're trying to tell us is, UDOT can easily undo that.
I'm not so sure it would be easy.
Really?
Well, they, they may have to go through a condemnation process to try and acquire the property, and I don't think that's a slam dunk.
Well, I, look, if we could sort of turn back time, I would be all for it. I think this wasn't, I, there's no, there's no harm in saying this, because it is what it is, this wasn't fully thought out when it was zoned what it was zoned.
Yeah.
And how close Westgate Lane is, and then, you know, what the full width and design of, of West Davis corridor is going to be, all of those things. But if UDOT, yeah, you, it is correct, UDOT does not own it now, nor do they control 200 north, but unfortunately, one decision that was made really long ago in this country is the power of eminent domain, and that's pretty strong, especially for roads. Other things, not so much, but it could go as far as taking private property and giving it to another private property owner, there's a movie about that, Little Pink House or something, I think it's called. But here, like, the quintessential use of But here, like, the quintessential use of eminent domain is roads. And so, yeah, they may not own it now, I think, and they have to go through a long process and sometimes a contentious process, but usually at the end of the day, unfortunately, the strong arm of the government wins those battles, and they will control it if they don't now.
Well, and I think to approve the subdivision, that's not one of the parameters that we have to look at.
Yeah.
They have frontage on public streets, on two public streets, they can gain access off of one of those or the other. We could express a preference, but it's really gonna be up to what the situation is when the convenience store comes in and applies for their permit. I guess the only thing that I would say at this point is, because we don't know exactly what's gonna happen with the access, just make sure that there's a cross-access agreement between those two lots.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because if that's the case, and the access has to come off West Gate, Lot 1's really at the back of this development. It's gonna, I don't know how it's gonna be laid out site plan wise. So, I mean, maybe this is a question for Melinda. If we're, if we have concerns about that, and we're like, to Dan's comment earlier, sure, if this were your average Joe, so does, here we go, if this were Lot 2 in the previous agenda item next to Golden West Credit Union, there's not the same concerns, and there could probably be a drive, there probably is gonna be a drive into the, what I heard was the proposed car wash there. That's not this. Lot 1 is really landlocked to some of the comments that were made at the beginning. And do we have the ability to move or mold or not approve what's proposed because we don't see how it's gonna work with the traffic pattern that West Davis, that UDOT's proposing, all those things? Or is it, hey, the subdivision meets the requirements, and if the property owner is gonna buy a property that's gonna make a funky project that's not gonna drive a lot of people there, that's their problem? Is it more of that?
Well, I think it's more of that. I mean, what we're considering tonight is preliminary plat essentially is what are our lot sizes? What are the lots going to look like? How many lots will there be? I mean, I was just looking through our preliminary plat requirements, and let me just drag that over so we can look at that, but, oh, there's so much figure on the screen here. I mean, I'm looking like, okay, so we're saying the pros and names, the location, information accurately, know where the property is on the plat, names and addresses, contours, which we don't normally have, but boundary lines, that shows the locations, horizontal alignments, all of that, and other dimensions, existing platted streets, or other important features such as easements. We, like we said, we would have to have some type of an access easement to that back property. This is also your utility easements. Let's see, I'm just trying to see if there is anything in here about access. And I'm not, I'm not seeing anything specific to access for a preliminary plat.
Well, Melinda, I'm looking at the requirements under the subdivision improvements, and it talks about the driveway approaches, but it doesn't say where they need to be or anything like that. It just gives sizes.
Yeah, because you can, you can cut a curb approach later, right? I mean, that depends. And it's, it's hard to kind of convey simplistically the complexities of land use. And so, right, like, there's, there's several steps before you get to a finished product. And, you know, one of those steps is to create a lot. This three acres actually has never been through a subdivision process, so right now it's a lot of record with the county. It's not even, like, anything that's been through a subdivision. So, before you even get to that point where you would determine whether your, or where your ingress, egress, your drive approach is going to be, you know, what your lot size is going to be. I've seen developers in residential subdivisions that they know exactly, they pour the curb gutter and the drive approach because they know that's where the driveway is gonna be. Custom homes, that you sell your lot, you don't know where your driveway is going to be. They cut those just later, so, you know, I mean, all that to say that the approach is, as I've seen here through some of the preliminary plat requirements, it doesn't require that you have to have access.
I mean, 21 says, "Plans or written statements regarding the proposed stormwater drainage facilities and other proposed special improvements such as sidewalks, planting, and parks, and any grading of individual lots." We can't evaluate sidewalks, nor the, nor the location of the stormwater improvements and their sufficiency without seeing more detail than what we're shown today. I, now, before the neighbors get all giddy, I'm not saying that this can't be approved. I'm just saying i- in some respects, we may not have enough info. May, I don't know.
Right, I mean, so, all of these things we have to have, right, but they don't all have to be on the plat. I mean, you wouldn't have a stormwater maintenance agreement spelled out on the plat. So, this is where, you know, yes, we do require those things, and certainly before final plat is approved and before construction moves on, but really what we're supposed to be discussing at this point is, you know, the lot size, shape, conformance to those codes.
I mean, well, just, 193-3, which is what we're looking at, says, "The plat and attached documentation shall show 1 through 22." So, I don't think we've gone to this level of detail in the past, and I'm not necessarily saying we have to now, but the words say all of that stuff.
Well, but
And we don't bring all of that to the planning
I was gonna say
Then we're violating, then we're violating our own code. It says "shall show."
Yeah, but I'm saying, I'm asking, I guess, you get that information, right? Because, I mean, Public Works, the power company, the water, they all review all of that in, here in the preliminary. I'm assuming they provide those.
Yeah, and we have our, yeah
That's a whole different document. That's gonna be construction drawings.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be brought to them.
The city engineer reviews.
This preliminary plat basically is what's gonna be recorded at the county.
Well, no, the preliminary, no, the preliminary plat
Well, time out, shut up.
Well, eventually, we'll have a plat recorded at the county. But the preliminary plat really is to just kind of set in place the outline of what those final plats are going to be like, but if there is any special considerations, right, we have power lines that may go through there, that may be an existing easement that we need to call out. This level of detail that the code calls for, yes, eventually, all of that comes in, but it has not been our practice to bring all of that information to the planning commission to review and ensure that's the role of staff.
Well, and I would point out that I didn't sneeze language there that said the timing of when that shall be done.
The timing of when the subdivision
Yeah, or this plat, the requirements are completed. So, I mean, I think that what you're saying is that these will eventually all be part of the plat, but I'm just trying to
You wouldn't have that on a plat, though.
It's not on the plat.
Yeah, exactly, so
It's the supporting documents.
True.
I'm, I'm assuming you've received other documents as part of this plat application that show a lot of these things that Joshua's just reading out?
So, what I can tell you is that our, our city engineer has reviewed what has been submitted and is recommending the preliminary plat approval. Whether or not all 22 of these is on there, I don't know, but my guess is frankly, probably not, but we haven't required that of any other subdivision plat. I mean, we do the preliminary plat, right? The final plat comes through, and by the time all is said and done, yes, all of these particular points, if they're relevant to that property, will be met.
Exactly. So, for a future meeting, and as a side note, I would say the code needs to be modified because if that's practice, in my opinion, it's, it's not following a plain reading of the code. So, for example, 17, I think it, you know, "The plat and attached documentation shall show a preliminary storm drainage study with schematic solutions and the associated calculations." You cannot, a civil engineer cannot make the associated calculations for a preliminary storm drainage study on a commercial property without knowing how much hard surface and permeable surface is going to be and where the, and what the structures are gonna be on that lot. And so, i- if we haven't, I understand why the city, or that the city hasn't, and maybe why the city hasn't been requiring it before preliminary plat approval, but that is a field from, that is, that is not following what, in my opinion, what the code requires.
Additionally, when, Melinda, you mentioned how there should be special considerations and what is considered relevant. In the planning commission staff report that we received, it didn't make a mention, to my knowledge, the anticipation of what UDOT's plans are. And to me, that is a challenge, I know even in other situations outside of planning commission, but just as a mother fighting for kids and safe routes to school, for example, on Highway 89 on Main Street, how there's a whole UDOT debacle, who owns this? Is it the city? Is it UDOT? Just kind of the back and forth of it, it did change things. And the way that you can't have an entrance on 200 North and how it's gonna have to be switched over to the other side, I just would be concerned, like, what role with being so close to the school, and I know that's not germane to this conversation, but just looking at this on a macro level and like, the fact that there can't be an entrance off of 200 North, if that's the case, so be it. But I want to know, like, based on our conversation, what we're trying to vote on tonight, and the uncertainty of the part of UDOT's role and what that's gonna look like, I, I don't know, I don't know if that would have changed anything coming in, but it would have been helpful to know that there are future plans, and the fact that we don't know what that's gonna look like, it just, it increases the uncertainty that I have of what, if, if this were my backyard, I would kind of wanna know generally what it's gonna look like a little bit more than like Lot 1 and Lot 2. I would want to know that, oh, we can't enter on 200 North now. Like, those, those are factors that, and maybe, it's something that they've gone back and forth a lot between UDOT and the owners, but it just, it just creates uncertainty in my mind, and so that's just where I'm at right now.
Yeah. Well, I would just maybe make the comment that if there was no subdivision being, like, applied for, they could have go build the come and go right now. So, I don't really know how this is really relevant. I mean, the fact that they're subdividing, that's on Perry Homes to decide how they're gonna give access to Lot 1. That's not our decision.
Right now, right now, if you look at that piece of paper, that document, they have access. We're all starting to go hypothetical that they're not, from what UDOT said, but, but right now
So, they could build it today and they'd have access on 200 North.
Today, they, they could build it something there and there, and then UDOT, if they didn't want to have access, would have to shut them down, but the, they have frontage right there, and that's, that's what I think we have to go off of as the document right now, the plat shows.
I, I'll just reiterate. I am fully aware that there's gonna be a gas station here, okay? I think I've explained my understanding, and all of us understand that that's gonna happen. So, I, my, my comments of late, of recent here, in just the last few minutes, are not at all trying to say, oh, let's try to find some creative legal maneuver to get around the law. That's not what I'm saying. I'm actually saying, the law says what it says. Let's make sure that if we haven't been in the past, we need to start following the requirements of our subdivision plat ordinance. And I'm hearing that there's 22 things, and us as a recommending body, I think, would not be doing our job if we did not, not go through every single one, but ask and get an answer that says, did we get, for example, a preliminary storm drainage study with schematic solutions and the associated calculations? That's just one of 22. If we don't, if that's, if that's not an affirmative yes answer, we got that, then I think we don't have enough information, that we don't have the information that the code requires us to have before we make our recommendation. I don't see that that's controversial. Someone tell me I'm wrong or tell me, change my mind, which I do change my mind, I think.
I 100% agree with you, but Dexter told me it's ready to go, so that's
Well, you didn't see it on the previous subdivision?
No, we didn't, which doesn't, doesn't mean that we shouldn't now, now that I recognize it. I totally agree with that, but just because we don't follow the code in the past doesn't mean we shouldn't follow it in the future.
Absolutely. So, the role of the engineer, right, is to look at all of this. And as Dan just said, when he tells us it's good to move forward, that's when we put it on the agenda. So, he felt it was ready to come forward to the planning commission. He didn't recommend any other conditions other than, well, there weren't any other conditions in the staff report, and so, I mean, what, what checklist he goes through, what may or may not be there, I don't know. All we know is that our city engineer has reviewed this. He felt like it was ready to move forward for approval.
I know it's been back for review two or three times. They've modified it two or three times. I know Dexter was thorough. I don't know if he covered all your items, he said. I'm pretty damn sure he did though, but he's not here, right? I can't come and ask him, but I, I'd almost bet he's been through it all because he's the stickler for all the, all that, and once he says it's good to go, I have to take it as good to go, and so, that's where I'm at.
I guess when I've been looking at these preliminary plats as we get them, and then I usually will ask a question, or somebody asks the question and says, has the city staff reviewed and made sure that all of the things are complied with? And when the answer is yes, then I assume that they've done all of that. But Josh, I mean, you raise a good point. Were all of those things really looked at? And I guess we could ask for an affirmative acknowledgement from the city staff that they did look at each one of those things, if we feel like that that's necessary. Each of those items that are listed in the code.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get that, you know, we are volunteer-appointed commissioners, and so if we just, we could gum up the works of government really easily even more than we already do. And so, I'm not, I am not at all an advocate for that. So, I guess I, I'll just say that. But in land use litigation, the only, the only time these, these oversights come up is if somebody challenges the decision. If, if they never get, if the decisions and the actions of council or commission or staff never get challenged, then the, the things that we all should be doing, but we get into a habit of not doing, go unnoticed. And what we should be doing is saying, let's try to follow the code as best we can. And I'm not saying the staff doesn't do that. I fully trust the staff, but we're all human, and we kind of get into a pattern of the way the city's always been done, and we sometimes overlook things. It's not malicious or, you know, nefarious, it's just what we do as people. So, that's why I'm saying we need to change the code to come in more conformance with what the historic practice has been with the city. But right now, we either just trust the staff, as Dan is saying, and, and if somebody wants to appeal it, they can really get to the bottom of it, or if nobody does, then we can move forward to get the code in more conformance with practice. can move forward to get the code in more conformance with practice.
I mean, Josh, I, yeah, you raise a good point. Those items are required in the code, and they should be there. I'm assuming that we don't see them all because we're not technical people, and so to give them to us is probably not that helpful because we're not, the only thing that we would look at them for is to make sure that they were submitted as required.
I totally agree. And so if...
And so if that's the case.
Yep.
I guess where we're sitting at tonight, I think it would be probably a good idea to get an acknowledgement from the city staff that each of those items were looked at as required by the code. And whether we want to do that before we make a recommendation on the preliminary plat or we go ahead and make a recommendation, because the preliminary plat goes to the city council.
Right.
And, and stipulate that those, that an affirmative acknowledgement be that the staff does acknowledge that they've reviewed each one of those twenty-two items. By when it goes to the city council, we could do it either way, I think, however we feel.
Sure. I mean, I think that would be reasonable to put a conditional approval on that those twenty-two items were, were covered.
Do you have any other questions for the applicant?
I mean, the only question I would have is about the cross-access agreement, and you've indicated that that's something that they're intending to do, so that's really the only question I would have. I'm curious where everybody else sits on this question of what Josh raised. Do we want to see it, or do we want to pass it on to the council and stipulate that they affirmatively, the staff affirmatively acknowledges that before the council?
Sure.
Takes their action?
I mean, I'm certainly willing to listen to everyone's opinion on this, this commission, but my preference would be that we leave those items to the staff that are professionals and have expertise in those items, and then we ask them that they complete them. So certainly, I think we should, maybe we should change the question to be like, did you cover all twenty-two items, you know, and then they can say yes, and then we would trust, you know, that they have, have covered those items.
Yeah, and I want to be clear, I'm not saying that, that I, in my quote-unquote infinite wisdom, which is not, that's facetious, know and should review all twenty-two. I do not want to do that, and I will fully trust the staff to do that. I'm just saying, we need to, we need to have assurance that it was done.
Yeah, agreed.
I assure you that Dexter told me that.
Well, yeah.
That it was good to go.
Yeah, that's...
And he, I don't know, he looked at the ones that's going to be pertinent, but Dexter said it's good to go, I'm, I'm, that's what I go off of every time we've done one of these.
Well, so there's obviously a few options, right? You could table this, ask us to bring it back, we could take a brief recess, see if you can get ahold of the city engineer to get those questions answered this evening, you could do a conditional approval.
Yeah. And I guess to the fellow commissioners here, I guess I'm asking, what do you, what do you prefer? Do you want to get the affirmative acknowledgement before we pass it on, or do you want to pass it on with the stipulation that that come from the staff before the city council takes their action?
I'm leaning towards conditional approval.
So with, if, you know, I don't know, I'm, let me, let me try a motion, and we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
See where this staff feels. I would make a motion that we recommend preliminary plat approval for the Westgate Estates Commercial Subdivision at twenty-three fifty-six west two hundred north and twenty-three sixty-eight west two hundred north, with the provision that A, there be a cross-access agreement between the two lots, either on the plat or by document that's recorded, and that before the city council takes action on the preliminary plat, that there is an affirmative acknowledgement made by the city staff that each of the twenty-two required items have been reviewed and addressed by the staff.
I'll second.
Yeah, me too.
Commissioner Lyon, beat you to the second. So we have a, a motion for recommendation for approval and a second. We will start the voting with Commissioner Lyon.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll quickly explain my vote. My suggestion is that at a future meeting, and maybe in the near future, or preferably in the near future, the city staff look at what have we really been requiring that's on this list of twenty-two, what have we been not so much requiring? And let's get the code in conformance with practice and with what the policymakers think is best, and then let's make change in the code so we're not having this discrepancy. With that, I will, I, I agree that if this, these conditions are met, that we can forward the recommendation, so I will vote aye.
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 Okay, the motion is approved unanimously approved. We'll now go to a public hearing for a text amendment, for text amendment to Title Seventeen, Chapter Thirty-three, sign regulations. And this is a legislative item, and as mentioned, this is, will have a public hearing eventually when we open that, after the staff has presented this.
All right, so this is a follow-up to the discussion we had at our last Planning Commission meeting. The question came up as to whether or not the West Davis Corridor would be designated as a scenic byway, which it appears that it will, or I've affirmed, or affirmed with UDOT that it will be a scenic byway up through the Antelope Drive area in Syracuse. However, UDOT will not regulate any signage outside of their right-of-way. I think those are the two questions that were germane, so that's the information. And then, as mentioned in the last meeting, I didn't make any changes to the draft ordinance that had been presented. We talked last time about some of the changes that we had made, changing information from terminology to community development, changing permitted uses or the conditional uses to, we anticipate in the future that we'll have all the conditional uses coming through staff and not coming to the city council or the Planning Commission. So we made those changes, and then the change really in consideration here is the height allowance on signage that would be in proximity to the West Davis Corridor. And the draft code that we have in front of you is to increase that height to forty-five feet, that's in line with what is allowed off of the I-15, and, let's see, I think that's really about it. So it was just adding in the West Davis Corridor to have the same provisions with the height allowances as the I-15. So our recommendation with that was that the Planning Commission corridor recommendation of approval to the city council on that proposed change.
Melinda, a question. So when you say that this is going to be a scenic corridor, similar to what the legacy is, but then you say that UDOT says that they're not going to regulate signs outside of their right-of-way, they don't have any signs in their right-of-way. The, the public sign, or the, the commercial signs that are located outside or along those highways are, are all on private property. So, and I mean, billboards, for example, they are regulated by state code within a certain distance of the right-of-way, and that's not UDOT right-of-way. So I guess I don't understand the statement where they say that they're not going to regulate signs that are not within their corridor.
Well, the question that I asked was, or maybe, maybe I just didn't communicate the information correctly, but because a scenic byway would exist, would that then require any additional regulation for signage, right? Like we just discussed ad nauseam some of UDOT's regulations for access points and traffic signals. So would that same regulation apply to anything that, let's say, was in three hundred feet within their right, within three hundred feet of their right-of-way? That really was the question that I was asking to them. And the, the answer back from UDOT was that they would not have any regulatory control over signage that's outside of their right-of-way. So they do put signage up on, on scenic byways, but I mean, I'm sure all of us in the room have driven up and down the I-15 more times than we would want, as well as Legacy Highway. The signage that you see on Legacy Highway has a very different feel than the UDOT signage that they have on the I-15. It's a softer feel, it's a, it's a kind of a more, it's, I think it's, it's softened to accommodate the feel of the wetlands, which is what the scenic byways to, you know, not, not obstruct, obstruct the feel of that, that wetland area. So the question to UDOT then was, you know, so does that mean we can't have a traffic signal within four hundred feet of an on-ramp? It was, does that mean we couldn't have our own sign regulations, or we would have to have different sign like regulations because it's within proximity of the scenic byway? And the answer back from them was no. I, I should say for the audience who wasn't here last time, but through that area, West Davis Corridor will be above grade of the two hundred north grade, about twenty-five to thirty feet. The code right now would allow them to have an eight-foot monument sign, and that didn't feel adequate, so the request to try and increase that to forty-five feet based on the height of the corridor was, when we talked about that as staff and thought that it made sense, so. I don't know if there's any other questions, but we, you know, the two, the two questions that really came up at the last meeting was, will it be a scenic byway? Yes. Would that impact anything that we would do with our own sign regulations? No.
So for a commercial sign, all right, let's just take this, the property that we were just dealing with for the subdivision law. The maximum height for a sign there now, under our current sign regulation, would be?
Eight feet.
Is it only eight feet, or, because I read here where it says, or within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of another principal arterial?
Our major street plan does not designate two hundred north as a major arterial.
Well, no, I'm thinking of the West Davis Corridor.
It doesn't designate West Davis Corridor as a major arterial. It's only Main Street and the I-15, and then whatever State Route sixty-seven is.
Are we going to designate West Davis Corridor as a?
State Route one seventy-seven.
Major arterial or principal arterial?
Well, sixty-seven is legacy, but I believe that...
But it's State Route one seventy-seven will be West Davis.
Be West Davis Corridor.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, so, I mean, there's a couple ways that this task, if it were to be accomplished, that it can, that it could be accomplished, right? We could amend the sign code to increase the height, or we could designate two hundred north as a principal arterial.
Yeah.
Right now, it is not designated as a principal arterial.
Yeah. I'm just, I mean, I'm looking at the, the concept of trying to keep that as a scenic byway and kind of limiting the signs, and if it is a principal or arterial or a, a main arterial, the sign could be thirty feet high, correct?
When you say it in that sentence, do you mean two hundred north or West Davis?
No, West Davis. That's three stories.
Yeah.
If West Davis, if it's within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet.
Well, I mean, i- if, to use the, to use the metaphor here, if I-15 is the aorta, like, West Davis Corridor here is just a one rung below whatever that is, whoever knows medical jargon in the body, I mean, it's a, it's an arterial. I mean...
Yeah.
So I'm not saying that it needs to be thirty or whatever, I'm just saying on that narrow question, I- I-15's the biggest one in the United, in Utah, you know, this one's with a handful of others a close second, it's going to be.
Yeah, no, I would agree.
There you go.
Oh, I would agree. I'm just questioning whether, because I-15 is not designated as a scenic byway, but the West Davis Highway will be.
Yeah.
A scenic byway. And I'm just, you know, thinking about the efficacy of, of limiting signage to some degree, and where our ordinance, I think, if we have the West Davis Corridor designated within our code as a, at least a principal arterial street, then the sign could be thirty feet high. And I'm, am I asking the question, isn't that high enough?
That's three stories.
Yeah.
I would like to hear with opening, I would like to public comment.
Well, I was gonna say, yeah, that's what I was just gonna say, I mean, I think that we are getting into too much discussion here. I mean, if we do have any further questions for staff, I mean, I'd welcome that at this point, but if, if there's any further questions for staff, I think that we would have the public hearing and then we can have this discussion afterwards.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I need to open, as I, we're opening the public, I just need to say that, you're, you're fine to come up. I need to open the public hearing. It's open now, you're free to comment.
So my name is Tavon Parker, and I would first ask if I might borrow a couple minutes from some of the people behind me, exceed the three-minute limit, but also hopefully also lower the overall minutes.
That's fine.
I will first, am I allowed to pass out? Little packet there, a couple more informations. So I just would first start off by just discussing Legacy Parkway's history and implementation. So the Legacy Parkway's master plan, say the following, as part of the master planning process, a model ordinance was drafted for cities to adopt more tightly regulated signage, site design, architecture, lighting, fences, and other features that could impact the parkways' natural and scenic integrity. So in developing, like I recall, the original West Davis Corridor, Legacy Parkway, the master plan actually calls for tighter regulations, not, for signs and lighting, they also had the goal to minimize light and noise intrusion and protect the dark skies of the parkway environment that are integral to parkways' natural and true equality. So this is relevant because West Davis Corridor did receive that same designation as a scenic byway, all the way through, as you said, through Antelope. And so firsthand out there is the Nature Conservancy, what Paige Trunell, Flannery, worked with UDOT on the project. So just a quick summary and highlight some of what I'm saying, but I've added that there so you can read if you'd like as well. UDOT worked with the Nature Conservancy for ten years, planning and constructing this highway, with the best plan to mitigate its wildlife impacts on the wildlife of the Great Lakes, Salt Lake Shorelands Preserve that the highway runs directly to. That Shorelands Preserve has four to six million birds, visit, feed, and nest at the lake annually, and is named one of the seventeen sites of hemispheric importance by the Western Hemisphere Shor River Reserve Network, international designation. So some of the important parts of mitigation plan agreed to lower the impact, was lowering the profile of the highway, utilizing quiet pavement, as well as limiting lighting. So I, I feel like, you know, we'd hate to go ahead and undo all the work analysis over that ten-year period by changing city ordinances, kind of bypassing interventions and stuff. I do understand that UDOT has already consulted about this and that they would not be directly regulating the signs off of their right-of-way, just here to say that just because something can be done doesn't mean it shouldn't be done. West Davis Corridor has some of the plans and intentions for what's essentially the extension of that Legacy Parkway. So the second handout is kind of UDOT's perspective of, of that work with, with the wetland and all that mitigation and planning. You'll see on the map area where sign regulation changes being proposed is in the area of that map. green area of that map, the mitigation copies. So I tried, I then went and looked at all the other neighboring city ordinances along Legacy Parkway, to review their sign regulations. Centerville does not treat Legacy the same as I-15. Westbound and Fort Woodscross Farmington, North Salt Lake, none of them are, from a sign regulation perspective, are treating I-15 of Legacy as equivalents. In fact, what Westbound and Fort Woodscross specifically call out in their city code, we will not be treating Legacy the same as I-15 as far as signs are concerned. So it's Kaysville City that will make this change, Kaysville will be the only city along the entire Legacy, and West Davis. I've contacted Layton and their city council, as well as Syracuse, and they have no intention of changing the designation. West Corridor is not in Layton's freeway sign corridor, and they're not going to change that at this time. So Kaysville will be the only one to make that change, and to compare it, or make an equivalent to I-15. And I feel like comparing a four-lane scenic byway to an eight- or 10-lane major highway would be a bit of a shame. That I encourage you, go ahead, I'm sure many of you have driven along either the proposed route or the West Davis Corridor, or along Legacy. And this would literally be the only sign of this type of height or size. And this includes an existing gas station in Centerville, which is about 500 feet off of Legacy. And it's no idea that the size or height, that this city code change would allow for it. So now look also to Highway 89, which is under construction, it'll be actually bigger for West Corridor, it'll be a three-minute, once again, Farmington, Fruit Heights, Layton, and right here in Kaysville. We're not looking at 89 any different than I-15, we're not treating it the same as I-15. Sorry, I can understand the initial thoughts, but I wanted to change the sign regulations, just hoping that you'll appreciate the intent of the scenic byway designation, recognize the outlier that Kaysville would be, and join the other cities protecting the wildlife and scenic integrity of the area on the highway. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Would anybody else like to comment? Yeah, you don't want to miss your chance. You waited all this time.
Just because I can. Eric Strong, I'm back here. I was just looking at 1733-7, and I assume when we talk about signs, we're talking about lighted signs. And item six said, "lighted signs shall not be installed, which permits the light to penetrate beyond that property and into neighbors or other places." So, so it kind of goes on, if we're gonna build a tall sign, it's gonna permeate further out, if it's lighted. And so, I would hope that as we follow this, if there's gonna be a sign, that, I don't come back, I live right across the street, it's in my backyard, and my backyard's been a mess for three years. I don't take the covers off my patio furniture, because every piece of dirt that's out there came down 200 North. Because from what we understood, when we called UDOT, is Kaysville is the only city that would allow access to haul that dirt. And that may be because of 200 North is, you know, I don't know why, but, you know, now having a light in my backyard all night, shining in my bedroom wouldn't be preferable either. So, the taller it is, I think the worse that would be. So, thank you.
Thanks.
My wife has...
Just a reminder to please state your name when you come, yeah.
I am Tammy Strong, Eric's wife, and we do live right, second north is our backyard. We live on Island Way, and it connects to the New West Gate Road. So during the small construction, we would, sorry, I'm trying not to be emotional, I promised. But, as this, the road has been constructed, and as Eric said, we don't take our patio furniture out, we don't sit in the backyard, because we walk to our garden and come back in, and you have to stop and wash your feet, as in olden times when you enter the house, you're covered. But, when they are doing the construction and the lights come on, so I'm imagining what the light from the gas station would look like, when they were doing construction on the road and had to dig up the road, they would work for a week long straight, 7:00 PM, they would start working, and they worked until 6:30 AM. And they would bring in their stadium lighting and turn it on full blast, so I'm like, in the middle of a stadium, trying to sleep with kids that have to get up and go to school, with jackhammers and lights and trucks and hammers and rollers and chisels and founders and everything you can imagine. And I don't want to live the rest of my life with the lights from a gas station shining into my bedroom, which is 150 feet from the gas station. Thanks, Erica.
Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Ed Davis. Thank you for not throwing me out.
We wouldn't throw you out for making a comment, no, for sure.
I appreciate that. I'm particularly empathetic to all of you. I served for several years on some planning commission. So I've been in your shoes, I've worn your hat. I've also been a real estate developer, so I've worn that hat and been on that side. And I think, for me, the issue with regard to signage is what I would call, not unlike, in fact, one more thing. I'm the one, but thank you for passing that out. My house is, if you look at it, behind the red square, I'm on that corner. So I'm three lots away from that commercial property. My concern with this whole process and signage included, and especially signage, is the unintended consequences, the decisions that make, that ripple. And as I sat and listened to all the work that your staff and everybody's gone into, I have empathy for all of that, because of, it sounds like, I think all the stakeholders in one way or another have found themselves painted into a corner. I don't like that. That's not what we, the people, are about. But having said that, and wife's philosophical, my wife tells me I can get a soul box too much, I want to say that we're not here, unless there's issue nor this one, to pick a fight. We just want fair treatment. We just want you, like I tried to do when I was on my planning commission, to put myself into the shoes of those people who are going to live with your facilities. I appreciate your time, I appreciate what you do. You're all volunteers, you could have been home, watching Big Bang Theory tonight. But, you're not. So thank you, and I'll get off my soul box, have a good night.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jessica Simon, and I wasn't planning on speaking, so sorry if this comes out jumbled, but I just wanted to read from Kaysville City's land use and zoning purpose of ordinances. It says the Kaysville's planning and zoning ordinances are designed to provide for the health, safety, and welfare, and promote the prosperity, improve the morals, peace, and good order, comfort, convenience, and aesthetics of the municipality and its present and future inhabitants and businesses, to protect the tax base, secure economy, governmental expenditures, foster agricultural and other industries, protect both urban and non-urban development, and to protect property values. And I just feel if we have codes and ordinances for the sign height to be eight foot, I do feel that that does go in line with what the purposes of ordinances are right now, and I think that they just did it so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and now we'll have a discussion as the planning commission.
Well, I guess I go back to what I was starting to talk about, which was, at some point, I guess, we're gonna have West Davis designated on our city map, and I'm guessing it'll be designated as at least a principal arterial, which would then allow, because that, I'm pretty certain that signs along there will be within 1,300 feet, that allows signs to go up to 30 feet. The corridor is gonna be designated as a scenic byway, and I'm really questioning whether signs need to be any higher than 30 feet, as our ordinance allows.
Well, and I'll, if I can interject, you go down and look at, in Centerville, they've allowed, right there, their interchange.
At the Maverick, huh?
The Maverick, where it comes off of there. They've got that one, and then they have apartment buildings there that they've allowed some, but they, I know that their height is...
It's pretty high.
Is, well, no, I think they've restricted theirs to the...
Did they restrict?
I think within that 30-foot envelope. It's not, it's not higher than three stories.
I mean, in my opinion, I don't even know why we need to talk 30. This is, so, back to what Nick talked about at the beginning, we have all the discretion in the world here.
Something we can control.
Ultimately, the city council does. It's their decision.
Right.
So, they, we get to recommend what we think they should do, ultimately, they get to do what they think is best for Kaysville. And citizen input, especially those who are gonna be impacted most by this ordinance change, I think, should carry a lot of weight, and certainly to the elected officials it should. And so, I think that the West Davis Corridor, not only is it objectively different than I-15, we should treat the surrounding area different than what we treat the surrounding area to I-15. So, I personally don't think, certainly 45, in my opinion, is off the table, 30 should be off the table, should be maybe half that or something. And here's why, because when you have a big tall sign on I-15, the tallest ones that I can think of in my mind are in Fillmore, because there's people driving on the road who may not have ever driven by Fillmore in their life, and they may not ever drive by there again, and they need a big sign to know where to go.
They need to know where those Kenosha labs are gonna be purchased.
Or the Maverick on the way to St. George, whatever. My point is, you need a big sign in a situation like that. In Kaysville, this interchange is mostly gonna be used by people who live or work in Kaysville, or are visiting in Kaysville. It's not necessarily gonna be the people who are in their truck, and they need to know where the Maverick is. So we don't need a big tall sign to tell them that. If they're desperate, they'll find, they'll find whether there's a sign there or not. I don't, I'm not saying we need to go to this extreme, but if you look at Kimball Junction and those TJ Maxx, the sign's as big as this computer screen. I'm not saying we need to go to that extreme, but the point is, people at Kimball Junction know where TJ Maxx is, whether there's a sign on the building or not. And that's a similar, and it's not the same, but it's similar to this. So I think that, we're only talking about a few properties anyway, we're talking about this one, where the gas station's gonna go. I think there's gonna be another interchange on the southwest corner of Kaysville, or close to it, is that right?
Of Sunset.
And there's maybe light industrial, I don't even know if we have commercial down there. Yeah, so we may not even have any, this might be the only place where there's gonna be a sign in Kaysville, along this corridor. And so, we really are getting to decide what the height of that one sign is gonna look like, and it, in my opinion, shouldn't be 30, maybe not even 15, but it should be down in that neighborhood, is what I think we should do.
And I'll address something else, because your sunblock, I think, is relevant. You have on the other side of that road, and I use it quite frequently, and I enjoy it, because it's only five minutes from my house, is you have a DWR walk-in access for pheasant hunting and for duck hunting. And I think where you have a great opportunity to restrict light from a flyway, we've got one of the best flyways in the US for birds, I think we do need to kind of be a little bit cognizant of the fact of keeping signs and lighting down in that area, not only for residential, but also for the number of animals, or the number of birds that fly up and down that corridor. It does get quite confusing for the birds flying in there with a lot of light.
Yeah, I mean, so, that kind of peaks a thought in my mind. I would almost be in favor of something, something of like a signage overlay buffer of like, I don't know, whether it's 300 feet or whatever, that just says, "along West Davis Corridor, in Kaysville, here's what the signs can look like." Not even included in this existing table, just make its own separate table, its own separate code for that buffer zone, or that overlay zone, excuse me, that says, "the signs, if they're gonna be lighted, they have to look like this, if they're gonna be interior illuminated, they can only look like this, the site, the size can only be this height, you know, the square footage allowed is only this square footage." All the things you think of when you're thinking sign ordinances, but you create an overlay just for the West Davis Corridor, along Kaysville. That would be my preference. I know that's not before us now, but if we're gonna forward a recommendation, I would be more in favor of something like that to what the city council should be thinking of.
Would you want to do like a downward lighting to limit illumination downward, instead of upward?
I mean, I don't, I can't sort of give my opinion on the fly on that, but I think the point is well-taken, that, you know, we don't want to be the anomaly along the corridor. If anything, we should go no higher than everybody else, if not shorter, is my view, and less obtrusive.
Good.
I absolutely agree, and when I think of the Great Salt Lake Shorelands Preserve, and for those of us that have been out there, when I think of, I remember years ago doing a survey online of Envision Utah, like, how can we mitigate, you know, just wildlife habitat, how can we allow, how can we preserve wildlife habitat while ensuring growth? And then I think of the Eric and Tammy Strong and their comments on the lighted signs, and even under that point six of 17-337-6, the part that, if, or in my backyard, the lighted sign shall not be installed, which permits the light to penetrate beyond the property, and this is my favorite part, "in such a manner as to annoy or interfere with the use of adjacent properties." That is something that's in our control, and that is something that we, as residents of Kaysville and citizens of our free country, can decide, like, what that should be, if any, and to your point about the Kimball Junction off-ramp, I do love the aesthetics of that, that, that's a beautiful point, in that we know exactly, and if it has to be named Come and Go, for heaven's sakes, we don't need to add any more attention to it, that we can figure that out.
It could be, it could be Wawa. Buc-Ee's. You guys don't travel?
Yeah, I've been to Wawa's before.
I love Wawa.
But I just wonder if there's a way, and I don't know what that would look like, not the smartest person up here, but just in terms of, what is, what is the purpose of it, and if we can allow wildlife to have that open space and habitat feel, and to your point, we still would know where the gas station is. That's my point. We don't want the birds to hit it either. Like, really. Buc-Ee's.
So are we wanting to, like, maybe table this, even to go back to the drawing table again? Do we have to table it?
I don't think so. I mean, I think we could make a recommendation with different...
With some type of change.
Different, yeah. But you were so eloquent.
I mean, I agree with all of the other changes that the staff has made. I would just take issue with the designation for the West Davis Corridor.
Do you think there needs to be some additional language there specifically for the West Davis Corridor that would control, like, signs and that?
Well, when I was making the point about the 30 feet within where another principal arterial, I would, that could be accomplished by just eliminating the language for West Davis Corridor. And then, I'm assuming, once West Davis Corridor is completed, the city's gonna update their map... their, their map showing the designation of the roads, and the West Davis corridor will certainly be at least a principal arterial, which would then allow the sign to be within 30 feet, if it's within 1,300 feet of, and all of our commercial areas along there will be within 1,300 feet. So, that would allow a sign to go up to 30 feet.
And I agree with Commissioner Sunlaw on the other point. I think that that road's going to become the major arterial for dropping off kids from my side of the neighborhood over to Shoreline Junior High every morning.
200 north, you're saying?
From 200 north. I think that's going to become the direct route for people going down the Leighton Parkway and coming around to get out of that neighborhood.
Yeah, and I think...
I think it's going to, it's going to become more of a local, local arterial route versus a trucking, you know, commercial.
Yeah, and I think the point that Josh has made, which is, you know, some lower designation, if that were the case, then maybe we keep the West Davis corridor, but we give it a different height.
Yep. I agree, I agree with the concept of an overlay.
So, I guess the question then is, and I'm not saying everyone's on board with this, but if I'm just, you know, what I would, what I would suggest, and I don't know if this is, if this needs ta, means we have to table it, or if we can forward on the recommendation with this, but, yeah, I would, I would suggest that we come up with a height where, you know, sort of this line drawing exercise, where do we draw the line? Come up with a height and maybe a square footage requirement, and what the buffer or the overlay looks like. And again, we're not, yeah, it's going to cover the whole length of West Davis along Caseville, but we're only talking, as we've already said, maybe a handful at the maximum of parcels. So, we come up with those things and say, "That's what our recommendation is," but it's not necess, that means, I guess implicit in that is, we would recommend a denial of what's proposed, and we would be saying, "That's our recommendation." So, I don't know if that means it's tabling or if it's not.
I'm looking into the most long-term planners in this state.
It's kind of quiet over here.
I mean, right, obviously, any option is on the table. You could recommend this back to staff to bring back at a future date with more data, with consideration with the scenic byway. You could forward it on and see what the council thinks with whatever height you would feel comfortable, you know, I mean, essentially, any, it's your prerogative, whatever.
What if, on that note, what if we were to do that, but also say, "Let's look at, like, Centerville to see what they did," because obviously, they put in a height requirement along that, that area.
So, I guess, maybe I'll make a motion, and we'll see how it goes. How about that?
Okay.
So, I move that we table this with a direction to staff to come back and create an overlay that will run along the West Davis corridor of some, I'll let staff kind of put their heads together about maybe what makes sense in terms of a width of this overlay off the right-of-way. And then, essentially, you're just creating a new call, or a new row on this table that says, "West Davis Corridor Sign Overlay." For on-premise ground signs, it's going to be X square foot per frontage, up to X square foot of maximum within X square feet, whatever that width is decided. So, you're, you're filling in essentially this table. So, it fits the format, and it's all new language that we then analyze and decide on. And my suggestion is, the maximum height should be a lot lower than 30. I don't know what, maybe, I don't know what the number, where we draw the line is, start at 15, start at 10, I don't know. But that's my, so my, so my, my motion is, we table it with a direction for staff to come back with that. Is that clear enough? Okay.
I'll second that, yeah.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'll second that motion.
We have a second for Commissioner Lot. So, we have the voting now to table this item with the recommendations from Commissioner Sunlaw. We'll start the voting with Commissioner Keach.
Aye. And in that staff report, if possible, I'm curious about, like, the Maverick in, right off of the Centerville exit, because that one seems...
The one I drive a pass at least two times a day.
Yeah.
I can tell you, one over here on 200 north is 25 feet tall.
Okay.
My, I'm pretty sure, and we checked a few weeks ago, and I think that was 25 feet tall. Am I 18?
Could, so...
I think it's, I think it's 20 feet tall.
The one off of, by, off of Legacy?
The one here off of 200.
Okay.
Our Maverick here. The one in Parish Lane, I can ask Centerville, but my guess is that it's probably 20 feet.
Yeah, I, I think we get that. We're just trying to get a sense of what does it look like, you know what I mean?
And Centerville's past, because Centerville has an ordinance that we can take a look at.
Yeah, I think it might be too late, if we're really following the rules of order, it might be too late. But, but a suggestion I would have is for the staff to kind of have data for us to chew on about what are, what are all the, what are all the municipalities along there? What, you know, what's their max? You know, it's kind of getting a little more fleshed out from the comment that was made in public comment.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, I know, 191 through Moab is a scenic byway. Maybe we can check with other communities that have a scenic byway through there and see what their regulations are for signage and bring something back. It'll take a few months for us to work through that, so we're happy to do that.
And so, to clarify, when we're talking about the Maverick, we're talking about the one off Parish Lane, but over off of 215, not the one off of I-15, right?
What?
Legacy?
215 doesn't go...
Oh, sorry.
We're talking about the one, we're talking about the one off of Legacy and Centerville.
Yeah.
So, my...
It's between.
Yeah.
But it's right off the exit.
Two times a day.
Yeah, right off the exit of Legacy.
Yeah.
So, my, my suggestion, or my, I guess my request is, I don't care what the municipalities say about their signs by I-15. Don't care about that. I want to know what the municipalities, if they do, to what extent they do, what do they say for their sign regulations with respect to Legacy and now the West Davis corridor? And, and my, my goal is, we should be either in line with that or less, a lesser standard than that. Now that we've muddied the voting waters.
Well, I, I mean, I think that's essentially what we would do, right?
Okay.
Yeah, we'd be thorough, we'd look at what other communities have done, and what's the best practices are for signage in the scenic byway.
Yeah. Is it me?
Well, just, are you okay with the changes that were made? Your vote's still the same, right?
Yeah, I said aye without, we agreed.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. I'm holding this up.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the voting is announced to table that, with the recommendation staff to come back with some further information. Okay, the last item of business, well, is a public hearing for a rezon application for a text amendment for Title 17, Chapter 27, mixed-use zoning district overlay.
Well, I know my spine is shot. I don't know if anybody else...
There's no urgency on this?
Do you want us to table this one?
Well, no, I mean, I just, if you don't mind me just kind of standing up, so, made the changes that were discussed the last commission meeting, and we're presenting those back for you all to consider. So, I did take out, there was about a dozen subject twos in the code that I took out for your Commissioner Sunlaw.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you know, made, made the changes as discussed, and it's just back in front of you for your discussion. If you want to bring it back at another time, too, but whatever the commission's preferences. I think we discussed it pretty thoroughly last time. I can pull it up and we can go through again if you want me to.
Yeah, maybe just so that we know what we're, we're looking at before we make the decision.
Okay.
I, I mean, maybe I'm the anomaly. I guess the question I would have before we do that, if I can, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there urgency to do it tonight?
We, we have an application that's been waiting since August.
Okay.
For changes. Can it wait a couple more weeks? I mean, it'll wait until it gets done, I guess, but, but they, they submitted their application, it's an incomplete application, but there, there are two projects right now that are waiting for the code to move forward so they can bring a project forward.
And you didn't, you already clarified this, but just so I'm understanding, with maybe the exception of the subject twos, you didn't, like, drastically change what we already discussed last time, was your point, right?
No, no, that, that was kind of, I suppose, really the only unbridled change was just based on your, your comment of the context of the subject twos not liking those. Everything else, I only changed what we discussed.
Yeah.
And I can just drag that over and then, we can just go through it. Sorry, I, I just pulled that for me. I haven't done this before in a few weeks, so, sorry about that. So, we talked about just kind of delineating out all of the items that need to be submitted so that we do have a complete application, and this would be one where, yeah, unless they submitted all of this information, we wouldn't bring the, the development agreement and the project forward. We talked about adding the circulation of parking study. We had a lot of questions about how to calculate the square footage on projects, and, and we kind of just, I think, decided to leave that a little more open. I did rearrange some of this because it was, it was odd to me that we're talking about the RM zone, and the residence, residential use was coming after all of the other uses. It just felt like that meaningless, and so I might have, I think I could make that change as well. We talked about adding in the, I think it's been, I think I've probably sit down for a few minutes now. Let's see, so, we talked about adding in the use for the motel or hotel and pushing some of those that were listed as permitted use or conditional uses to permitted. Those are all now consistent through all of the zones. Because I think, you know, what you would have, what in a mixed-use project, one, I mean, to me, mixed use is mixed use. It doesn't matter whether it's an RM, underlying zone, or commercial. If it makes sense to do mixed use, I think the uses, you know, would, would translate across all of those underlying or those overlooked base zones. So, this was some of the wording we worked, we worked on last time, minimum of 30% of the pine totals where footage for all buildings shall be commercial. But then we also have up here that, you know, it'll be defined in the development agreement. And so, I based that language to be consistent through, it should be the same language for the GC zone coming down through here, and then through the LA zone. Although with the LA zone, we did talk about adding in the light industrial research uses not subject to KCC 1732, but S specified. Is that better terminology?
S specified, yeah.
Okay. Little things matter, right?
Yeah, right.
Um, let's see. So, again, we're just talking about, this is where we were trying to be a little bit more, I guess, to kind of telegraph a little bit more to an applicant what we would expect to see. And so, we were saying, you know, you know, adequate light industrial or commercial, I just have commercial on the other two base zones. But this is what, you know, the final portion will be done by a development agreement. But the minimum guidelines for space include ground floor, commercial, and then a minimum of 30%. And I think that gives us the flexibility, like, if we did the math and it was 27.8%, is that close enough? You know, but if they come to us with only 10%, right, that gives us, I think, the flexibility to really look at the individual site and the characteristics and get a project that makes sense. And then we talked about the public utility substations, and if they were owned by the city, we might want to have that. It just gives us the flexibility. And then, we did talk a little bit about the height. I will say that one of the applicants I've been working, or the future applicants I've been working with on a mixed-use project, this is the one that would go right in next to the Mr. Carwash. So, they would not want to see, where was it? Where we talked about the height being near a dwelling, and that's limited to 30 feet. So, we changed some wording on that, and I think just, sorry, just made it more clear. They would prefer to have more height, of course. And then this was where we made the changes to try and kind of pigeonhole some commercial uses, but not end up with four- or five-story apartments. So, this would be, you know, somebody brought in a hotel or wanted to do a four-story apartment, or, sorry, office building, we could allow that if the, if the council wanted to see something like that.
Wait, can we just?
Yeah.
There's an edit that needs to be. "No main building shall be less than 13," written out, feet, paragraph 13, six...
So, we need to do that, too.
Yeah.
13.
Yeah. As a side note, yeah, I'm not gonna, I don't want to, the trend in legal draft, legal writing and drafting is to not do that. It's a kind of a relic of the past. You just write it once. You don't need to do it twice, because it creates this very possibility. So, you just say, "Shall be less than 10 feet in height, less than 6 feet in height," or whatever the word is. You don't do the paragraph. But I know people will get, not, not saying you, Linda, there's a lot of people that just say, "No, that's how we have to do it." So, if you want to keep it that way, that's fine, but just make sure that's changed.
My preference would be to not do it, but it was trying to keep consistent with how the code was actually written.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll note that is inconsistent, and then if, if it's the commission's recommendation, we'll change 10 to 13 and 6 here to 10. So, it is kind of hard working with these red line drafts to...
Yeah.
Really.
...capturing everything. Let's see, we didn't really have, I mean, some of the deficiencies with, or questions that come to mind with the code as it currently is, is if you have setbacks of the base zone, but it's a commercial building. And so, I think this just gives us, again, more flexibility to, to put buildings where they should be based on the type of project. So, let's see. And then this is, is really, right, this is kind of the section right here that just says, like, "As long as the council approves that in a development agreement," you know, essentially, anything in this chapter can be changed as long as the council puts that in a development agreement. has set in a development agreement. And then we're changing, you know, or clarifying that that'll be done by community development staff. I think that's, I think that's really the bulk of what we talked about. So we did talk about having, like, say, the functional approved space or open space. I did, this was something I did that wasn't necessarily a direction from the planning commission, but we talked about in the meeting, like, well, what is open space? Is it a plaza? So I just clarified in here that it could include a plaza, a paseo, a walking trail, an amphitheater, you know, and if somebody wanted to do gardens, just anything that would be like a nice place to gather. So I did put that in. I don't know what the council, or sorry, the commission thinks about that addition. But we're just trying to be, I think, illustrative of what we would like to see with open space.
I like, I like that. And I think the et cetera gets at my suggestion as well. But I, I would say after can include, I would say put something like such things as, and then it just makes it pretty broad instead of.
Or say may include.
May include?
May include.
Well, yeah, may, may works, but I, that's, that's a good point, but that's separate from my point. My point is, let's not restrict it potentially to just these things. The et cetera, like I said, gets at that. But if you'd say such things as, then it's saying, well, it could be also, it could be a trail or a walking trail, a biking trail, a hiking trail. I mean, you know what I mean? It just, such things as gives it more, a broader scope.
May include such things as, yeah.
Yeah.
I can make that change. We did talk quite a bit about parking last time. I did go back and look to confirm for sure the changes that I made with our mixed use code in the last municipality I worked for. And all of these were the same except for with the studio units. We did 1.15. And I think that could just get you another little kind of boost for guest parking. But, you know, we talked about not necessarily, well, about having a parking study if we were gonna consider anything different. I think the, I think those parking requirements are probably about as good as can be as far as trying to meet that in the middle with not underparking or overparking. But again, we have the option that if, if there's a project that makes sense to do shared parking, we can discuss that in that part of the development agreement. I, I don't think I changed anything with this part, although they were out of order. So we should talk about the eighth of a mile, in my mind anyway, before we talk about the quarter mile. And then I added in the curb management. I think that leaves it open again to just bring forward something that'll work and make sense. And that's the end. So we did talk a little bit about the sign code at the last meeting too, and it really just refers back to that chapter two, I think that's the sign code. So other than a few more subject twos, just, and adding in the paseo and all the plazas and stuff, that's, the changes is made by, directed by the planning commission. And then going back to, we're recommending that, well, we open and hold a public hearing because that's why we're all still here. And then staff is recommending that you forward a positive recommendation to the city council to approve the proposed text amendments.
I think one thing to consider is that we do have the public here. Lots of times we don't. So it might be opportunity to have a public hearing.
Actually have the public.
Are you willing to do it, or we should be table it?
I'm willing. We're here.
Is everyone willing to?
I mean, I think it was noticed as such.
It was noticed as a public hearing.
Yeah.
We've noticed it twice, so.
Yeah, I think that we should just go ahead, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions before we, like, of the staff, before any more further questions? Okay, so we'll, we'll open the public hearing now. So if anybody's here that would like to speak to this proposed change, to the, to this text amendment to the mixed use zoning, please come forward now. It's your chance.
To Alan Parker, that was a lot of red lines. I just have here a question. What does a one and a half or two and a half parking stalls practically look like?
It's a formula.
It's, it's math. So if we calculate that you have to have eight and a half stalls, you have to provide nine. Yeah, yeah. So we round it up.
Okay, thanks.
It's a good question. It's for the...
You know those little bitty cars they have now?
Poor developers do have to do math, so.
Good question, though. Thanks for...
It's a good question.
Yeah.
So when they're, when they're building their units, you get, you know, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we've had that, right? Where a project comes forward and comes forward, it's like nine and a half spaces are required. Well, you can't do a half a spot, so you have to do 10.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay, come on up.
Amy Ringel. I guess I just don't completely understand, like, what would be mixed use? Are we talking like a store on the bottom with apartments on top?
Mixed use is commercial, residential, in the same building.
And is, I mean, in our overall plan of the city, I mean, are there certain areas where that would be the best place to curb something?
Yeah, I mean, it's, you can look at the general plan that was just adopted and it shows kind of future land use map that says, here's where we think, because you should go. Then there's some recent projects where it is more like, where it is gonna go, where it's gonna be proposed to go. Yeah.
Yeah, a good example is like Sugar House. When you go down to Salt Lake, Sandy's got some of these.
Okay, hold on. We're not gonna be at Sugar House.
But it, yeah, exactly. Don't panic, but it's, but it's, it's, it's that type of development where you have, you know, ability to develop that out, so.
It just basically, right now, the entirety of Kaysville is every parcel is only permitted one general use. And, and there might be a lot of things within that zone or that use. It's that zone, really, it's to say, the best way to say it is the zone. Every zone has X number of uses. Mixed use zone says you can have, you can combine two different zones typically that are separate into one parcel. Yeah.
The map up here now, that's our general plan map. The mixed use area is what color?
Sorry.
Is it the pink?
The brown.
It's the brown.
Or whatever color someone would say that is.
It's the brown.
Oh, yeah, the brown. Okay, the brown.
Sure.
So like the guy that came in earlier and he wanted to have a gun sale and thinking at his house, would that change to a mixed use instead of a conditional use?
No, but the other one, the Golden West Credit Union, that one that's just right up, that one could be an example if they switched that out. And maybe there was something commercial down low and then maybe some townhomes or something above.
Yeah, they've got that in Ogden.
Yeah. Yeah, when we talk about, so we, we create zones, which is, as Commissioner Sunlaw was saying, uses. And generally, you don't want to have, traditionally, you haven't married those uses. So we don't, we don't want an industrial facility right next door to residential. And so that's why you have these different zones. Mixed use is just marrying some of those uses. And what it really is doing is essentially allowing a residential use in a zone that traditionally is commercial or retail. Or conversely, you can allow commercial uses in a zone that's traditionally residential. And so, yes, there are examples, like you mentioned, in, in Ogden, the Junction area, they have ground floor commercial and then a couple of stories of apartments. That's not always what it has to look like. You have really intense uses like Commissioner Lyon was saying in, in Sugar House. So you can also have mixed uses that allow for the same type of, or not the same, but within a same development, you might have one building that's townhomes, but right next to a building that's offices. So you can have also what's called, you have your vertical mixed use, which is what we're talking about really when you look at Sugar House. But you can also have what we call horizontal mixed use, which would be, you know, maybe we put those commercial buildings right up front, but back behind there might be some residential. So some Rosa Townhomes or some, you know, two or three story apartments.
So does this code allow for both vertical and horizontal?
It does, yes. Yes, either one of those.
Are there other laws in place? Like, I don't know. I would prefer to live above an ice cream shop than like grocery.
Exactly. So manufacturing, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, we're not in Tokyo.
Thank you.
But, but Tokyo, you go to Tokyo and similar use. I mean, you get, you get high grade manufacturing and stuff, but it's the density there is so high. You've got 35 million of your favorite friends you're living next to. And so you have, you have that different use there.
It's just when you write the code, it's like, it kind of ties your hand when someone brings a project because they're like, oh, well, it meets the code. So I think when you're writing the code, you have to look, look at this and say, okay, let's say some crazy person comes in that we really don't want that in our city and don't feel like that represents Kaysville.
Agreed.
So I think, I appreciate your guys do. I think it's good to carefully look at the code and say, hmm, as we wrote this, does it allow for this situation that we really don't want?
I mean, you, you saw it exactly today, which is, some people think that when the code was written and the map was drawn for the, where the gas station is, it shouldn't have been that way. And right now is where people wish we were, but we were 10 years ago with, with that decision. People wish we were there today, but we weren't. Now we're stuck, like you said. So, yes.
Yeah, pretty funny as well. And I think personally, I feel like, I mean, I get this next to the highway and commercial sort of makes sense there. But I also see that it was zoned commercial in 2004. That was before the Perry Homes was zoned from agricultural to residential. That was before schools there. So it's like, I kind of hate that our hands are tied, that it's zoned commercial so long ago when these, all these other factors weren't even a factor. So I think, you know, carefully planning is good. Anyway, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and we'll have a discussion. Anyone have any thoughts on this?
We did have a pretty good discussion last time about it.
Yeah, and we've made the changes, I think, that we recommended, so.
I think we did.
I would make a motion that we recommend onto the city council, the changes in the mixed use zone as we presented tonight with the few adjustments that we discussed here.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion to recommend approval and a second. We'll go ahead with the voting with Commissioner Sunlaw first.
Aye.
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 All right, the motion passes unanimously. So thanks for your input. We appreciate the public input tonight. And we just turn the time over to the staff for like any reports or correspondence, any, any other calendar items we need to be aware of. Okay, because we already did the call of the public, so.
Does your spine have anything to say?
All right. Well, in that case, I'll, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you. We're adjourned.